All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Hard to Believe, March Caucus already. So we're just going to go ahead and begin our March Caucus agenda with just a couple of announcements. And at the beginning, one of the things we're extremely excited about is our continued partnership with Cumberland Perry Area Career and Technical Center. And without further ado, I'll introduce our guest, Mr. Tom Wolf. He is the Administrative Director at Cumberland Perry Area Career and Technical Center, and he's going to introduce our outstanding student, who's going to talk a little bit about her experiences at CPACTC.
Thank you very much for the nice introduction. I am Tom Wolf. I started as the Director at Cumberland Perry Area Career and Technical Center at the end of October. I will simply say it has been a whirlwind four months, but I am thrilled to be back at Cumberland Perry. I spent many years there as an instructor. I think, quite honestly, I'm sure you would rather hear from the young lady to my left right now rather than for me, so I'm going to introduce Marissa Fulton. She is a Susquehanna Nita Senior in our Emerging Health Professionals Program, and she's going to speak to you a little bit about her experience at the CTC, and then I will make a few comments when she is done.
Thank you. So as you said, my name is Marissa Fulton, and I'm a senior here at Susquehanna. I'm currently in EHP, but the last two years I have been, well, not this one, the two before, I was in regular healthcare pathways. And I chose healthcare pathways because of the variety of classes offered, like phlebotomy, EKG, pharma tech, CNA. I then chose to apply for EHP because I felt I had taken advantage of all the healthcare pathways classes that I had an interest for, and wanted to get a head start in college classes and find confirmation in my future career through shadowing. My journey to become an MRI tech will have already begun with earning a combined total of 11 college credits through HAC and Penn Tech in just EHP alone. With already taking most of my general classes through HAC and Penn Tech at VOTAC and HAC and Lackawanna through Susquehanna, I plan to work as a phlebotomist, which I got certified in for at VOTAC while earning my associate's degree at HAC to be an MRI tech. Not only did I get my AMCA phlebotomy certification, but also received certifications for OSHA, BLS, and Stop the Bleed. Among certifications, I was also taught valuable skills in the healthcare field over the course of the last three years. Some of those skills include taking vitals, transferring patients, pheno-puncture, donning and doffing PPE, and collecting specimens, just to name a few. The major thing that sets VOTAC apart from the sending schools, in my opinion, is testing off on those skills, which demonstrates our ability to perform those hands-on tasks in the real world, which I find to be very beneficial. Along with tests, practical certifications, shadowing, and the guest speakers, we actually had a neurosearching guest speaker, which I found really cool. But we also have clubs there, and I'm a part of National Vocational Tech Honor Society, and I'm the President of HOSA. HOSA is a club open to healthcare and dental students where we fundraise and do community service. We also have Penn HOSA State Leadership Conference, which is like a three-day event where we play bingo, and we can compete in all of these different healthcare events, and there's like a dance and everything. So it's really fun to like compete with or against your friends and just meet new people there. And this year, I plan on doing medical terminology in that and an anatomage table, which we actually have here at VOTAC this year, which like you can identify all the different bones, organs, muscles, which is like really cool, because it's like a new piece of technology that's quite expensive. But um, so I'd say the highlight of VOTAC for me would probably be SLC and just like making all those new friends and memories. So I'd like to thank you guys for having me speak here today, and if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, not so early. Not so quick. I have a question. Just amazed by all the accomplishments, the phlebotomy, all of it is amazing. Every time I hear that word, I want to say vampire. Do they ever call you a vampire? That's probably disrespectful, though, but. So what are you thinking, MRI tech stuff? When you graduate, what are your plans? Are you going to continue the MRI? Are you going to go right into doing phlebotomy? What are your plans?
So I plan to go to HAC for two years, but like the first year would be at Harrisburg, and then they only offer at the Lancaster, so I want to go there the second year. But while doing that, because I did take most of my general classes like through Susquehanna or VOTAC, I plan on doing phlebotomy like in the evenings, like a part-time job.
Yeah, that's awesome. So studying what at HAC, toward what degree or?
What?
When you go to HAC, what will you be studying there?
So it's like basic like X-ray classes, so like general like X-ray. I think they learn like CT and all that different stuff, and then you specialize in MRI like the second year.
And I love you're already taking HAC classes, and you're taking classes at Lackawanna as well. So you're one of our kids that we like to see are college prep kids who are also going to the tech school, getting a career. Like you could do phlebotomy at night on the weekends. It's like really great, so thank you for coming and sharing with us.
Yeah, I would say the phlebotomy part was probably my favorite part of VOTAC because they have like these fake arms, so like you can actually like draw the blood, and like the fake blood comes out, so it's pretty cool.
I don't think the blood's supposed to come out, right? But in a tube, right?
Yes.
Okay, why wasn't sure? Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
It's hard to follow a story like that. Again, thank you for coming and sharing tonight, Marissa. I do want to point out a couple of things. There's two sheets that should be in front of you. One is a white one that has just some basic information about Susquehanna's participation at Cumberland Perry. As you could see, the enrollment of Susquehanna students at Cumberland Perry has remained pretty steady throughout the last several years. This year, we have 73 students enrolled at the CTC. And if you look on the right-hand side there, you can see that they're fairly evenly distributed among our 23 different programs. This does not happen without the support, starting here at the Board, going to the Administration, right down to the counselors and other teaching staff at the high school, encouraging these students to take advantage of the opportunities that exist for them at Cumberland Perry. And I want to thank you for that. She mentioned the animatage table. That is something, I would like to extend an invitation to all of you to come over and see our programs at the CTC. I'd be glad to give you a tour through the building. But that is a piece of technology that if you would see it, is just simply amazing. It shows if you are not, if you have not ever seen one, it actually will show like the muscular system, the nervous system, the skeletal system. It looks three-dimensional, but you can show all these things independently in, you know, as it is in the human body. And it is a really awesome training aid that we are very fortunate to have. The second thing I would like to point out is the colored sheet that you have in front of you. It has some statistics about the CTC and our programs, credentials. And I would like to just draw your attention to the stars at the bottom of the front page. On the left-hand side, it shows that last year we had 1,700 credentials earned by our students. That's an impressive number. That's more than one credential per student. But I think to really get a perspective on what that means for our students and the benefits it gives to them, you have to look at some of those specific credentials. And I'm going to refer to like our Certified Nursing Assistant credential. For a student that obtains that credential, that can mean anywhere from about a $5 to $7 an hour increase in the wages that they can earn. For many of these students, if they're choosing to go right into the workforce out of high school, that puts them in a position where they can earn a family-sustaining wage and begin in their career. For others, it gives them the opportunity to earn enough money to support themselves and begin to pursue their post-secondary career while, again, supporting themselves. That is, I think, an advantage that just cannot be overlooked, that they're in a position where they can continue their education, they're getting valuable experience, and they're not racking up debt. The next star there is 723. That is the college credits that are available to our students. Marissa mentioned them. There is a lot of advantage to these college credits that you're not going to get just from a number. One of them is, and I think specifically about the Emerging Health Professionals Program, they're making that transition into taking what are some very challenging college-level courses while still having the support of a secondary teacher at their disposal during the school day. And I think for many of these students, that really makes them comfortable with that transition, and they can confidently move into their college experience then after they graduate. For others, it may take off a semester of their college experience, and again, cut their debt, cut their expenses. Or for others who are working and paying their way through school, it lets them have a reasonable workload the first couple of semesters till they get acclimated to that college experience. The third star there is 129. That was the number of students we had participating in cooperative education at the end of last school year. Our current numbers are right around 115 for this school year. The highest wages that we've had any of those students earning this year were around $36 an hour, was a student from the carpentry program who was working on a prevailing wage job. The average is around $16.50 an hour. So I think you could see that all of these opportunities give valuable experience to the students and put them in a position to leave high school and either start their career or have a jumpstart on their post-secondary education. That doesn't happen without your support. And again, I would welcome and encourage you to come out and see what we do at the CTC. I would love to take the time to show that to you. I could stand here and talk for hours about career and technical education, but I do not want to do that. But I will be happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
The enrollment in terms of quota, I noticed like this year, we have 73 students, but our quota is 70. So are we able to get those students because other districts did not fill their quota? That we were able to go over ours? That's my first question.
That is correct.
Okay. And then my second question is, does that then change our tuition? Like if we go over our quota, do we have to? Not that I'm happy if we go over the quota. I'm not asking like I want to, I just want them from a budgetary standpoint. Do we have to think about that?
The answer to that is yes. How that is calculated is done on a, drawing a blank here. It's either a three-year or five-year average, five-year average. And so if you have a significant dip one year over another, it's not, you're not going to see that impact all in that year because it's the average of the last five years.
Okay, so in one given year, we're not going to be, our tuition won't be adjusted based on the fact that we go over. It would only happen if over a course of a five-year rolling average, we would be up. We would be up higher.
That is correct.
Awesome. I'm happy to see we're over the quota. That makes me happy, so.
I don't think there has ever been a time that a career in technical education has been as valuable as it is today. It's, and I think that is why we're seeing the wait lists and the number of applicants. We had, this year, we have several hundred more students applied for the seats at the school than what we have for the coming year.
And that's why we just invested over a million dollars to build more.
That is correct.
Because we need more space, because we want our students, more students to take advantage.
Yes. Any other questions? Thank you all very much for the invitation to be here tonight and for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Wolf, for all of your leadership. And Marissa, thank you for sharing your experiences, all those incredible stacking credentials that you have as you continue all of that hard work in your 12th grade year this year and then onward. So please keep up the good work. And when we talk career and technical education, and sometimes the best way to attract students is that marketing yourself, like yourself going out and sharing those experiences, and then those success breeds success. So thank you for all you do.
And Mr. Wolf and Marissa, unless you are very fascinated by our agenda, none of us will be offended if you decide to go home. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to some resignations, leaves, transfers, and employment onto some agenda items for March 11th's board meeting coming up. Under personnel, we have two resignations. Unfortunately, we have Mrs. Courtney Neal from the position of custodian at the elementary school, and Mr. Eugene Wright from the position of custodian at the middle school. So we thank both Mr. Wright and Mrs. Neal for all of their hard work that they've done. They spent, Mrs. Neal, I believe, a couple of years here, started as a Black Hawk team member, and then Mr. Wright, several years. Eugene's done and been instrumental in our middle school. Retirements, unfortunately, this is the time of the year where we have some retirements. And you never like to, you certainly, you know, part of us, all of us, is excited for an opportunity for somebody to do retirement, to be able to have that retirement. But from an educational point of view, when I look at three outstanding educators on this list for retirement, it certainly is a big and heavy loss educationally for our students, for our school community, and certainly for me personally, seeing these individuals. The first is Mrs. Dawn Brochus, and we'll get a chance to certainly recognize these individuals more personally. But Mrs. Dawn Brochus has been with our district for nine years, and she'll put her letter of intent to retire. Outstanding educator at the end of this school year. The next is Dr. Rosario Epley. She's done everything in this school, from plays to the Seal of Bileiteracy to Spanish National Honor Society, to just being a part of everything and just making herself available to the students, from letters of recommendation to helping them. And just, she's, you know, when you look up first-class distinguished educator, she certainly is there. And she's been with our district for 19 years. And then Kathy Faran, unbelievable, her energy level, you know, even after 21 years, it's still there. Her ability to differentiate, to understand students, her ability to connect and make those lessons come to life is just, she definitely is, you know, when you look up distinguished educator, all three of these individuals are there. That's 49 years of outstanding educational experience. So I think, I know this is just a caucus meeting, and we're not accepting their resignations, but let's go ahead and give them a round of applause. Hopefully, they're, I'm sure they're, hopefully, they'll hear these messages, and we'll get a chance to continue to recognize them because they certainly deserve it. Under employment, I'm excited to welcome Brandy Byrne from Liverpool for the position of District/Superintendent's Administrative Assistant. So she'll be joining us following the March 11th board meeting. So excited to have Brandy. Brandy comes with years' experience as a legal assistant, and we're excited to have her join our administrative team in office. Jessica Sharp, she's going to join us in the position of Autistic Support at the elementary school, and she comes with a lot of experience as well. And we're excited to welcome Jessica and hit the ground running here. And we're excited to welcome back Carrie Wilson. Carrie, I saw her today. She's excited to be back, and we're excited to have Carrie back, joining us as a paraprofessional. And she'll also do some substitute teaching for us also, especially as we start getting into the spring. And we have the need for some short-term substitute positions. Change in status, we have Allison Lang, moving from Masters plus 30, Step 15, to Masters plus 35, Step 15. So congratulations to Allison. Voluntary transfer, we have Mrs. Lindsay Peterson from the position of Middle School Spanish, looking to transition here to the High School Spanish program. If I'm accurate in saying, she was one of Dr. Epley's students, if I remember. Is that, or she was a student here? I'll have to fact-check if she was one of Dr. Epley's students. But certainly, Mrs. Peterson has done an incredible job at the middle school. And knowing that she has that knowledge already at the middle school, it will continue to help bolster that curricular alignment between the middle and high school programs, and even down to some experiences that we want to continue at the elementary school for students to get that generalized experience. Substitute staff, Courtney Neal. So Courtney isn't going to join us every day, but would like to be a part of our substitute team, and we certainly welcome that. Under athletic coaches and volunteers, we have Mr. Mark Britcher as an assistant coach for softball. And that rounds out the resignations, leaves, and transfers of employment for the board meeting to date on March 11th. We do have some, staying with myself here, some agenda items. We are looking at approving the Capital Area Intermediate Unit's budget. It will be a 0% increase from the previous year at our contribution amount of $14,978. We have approval of, and like to thank Hannah Walter for stepping in and being our interim tax collector for Penn Township for school district taxes. But Penn Township has approved the tax collector, Carol Brettz, and we're looking to approve her as the Penn Township School District Tax Collector. We're looking for approval, and we'll go into a presentation overview tonight of our 2025 to 2028 District Comprehensive Plan. And before we go any further with that, I'd like to thank Ms. Snyder for her leadership in bringing together a multi-interdisciplinary group of teachers and parents, community members, business owners, to come to the table to work on this plan. And again, much like the portrait of a graduate, this plan really is about a direction and gives us that direction. And the power also was in the conversations. Really enjoyed the conversations in our small groups about some of the data and using that data to help drive some of our SMART goals. So thank you very much for everything. Looking to approve our board meeting schedule. We discussed that, I believe, at a previous caucus meeting, and now looking for approval on the 25-26 board meeting schedule. And looking to approve a donation of $300. That's an anonymous donation from a community member who, a community member, who wanted to earmark that money for elementary school lunch accounts. So we really thank them for their $300 donation and their kindness. And we have two field trips on the agenda for consideration. It's an eighth-grade field trip to Harpers Ferry National Historical Park in West Virginia on April 11th. And we're looking to really kind of delve into American history, learn a little bit about the Civil War and just those aspects of it. That area has been historical for a lot of different perspectives, so it's a really, really good location to go. And they'll be missing one school day as well. And Spanish National Honor Society is taking a trip to our nation's capital, or looking to take a trip to our nation's capital on April 3rd. They'd like to visit the Latino Museum as a part of the American History Museum, and that's a division of Smithsonian. And also have lunch at a Hispanic restaurant in the DC area. Having been to the American History Museum, it's one of my favorite places to certainly go. I love it. You could get lost in there all day long, and I highly recommend it. All right, that is agenda items. Any questions on those? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to Ms. Snyder. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Fox. Just a few curriculum updates to share with everyone tonight. Some great events coming up at the elementary school. This Thursday, we actually have pre-K night, which starts at 6:30 PM. So we're looking to just have all our incoming parents of kindergarten students coming in to hear from several different people at the elementary school and get to tour the building a little bit, so that's exciting. And then also, next Thursday, we have STEAM night at the elementary school from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So Ms. Sarah Bear coordinates and runs that for the elementary school, inviting all students to come in and just experience some different activities related to her course curriculum and STEAM in general. So we're excited to have that as well. I also want to make sure to mention that LIFTED 2025, so I don't know if you remember, last year, we had our very first year, our opening year of the LIFTED conference. And Mrs. Montage has led our planning team to just continue the excellence this year. We're really excited to go into year two, and we're looking to offer that on June 10th this year. It's a Tuesday at the high school. And we just opened registration yesterday, so we're really excited, you know, just to welcome everybody back and have some new sessions and speakers. So just a lot to plan for, but that's coming up in three short months. And then also, I just want to make sure to mention that I'm currently working with a lot of different people just to sort of build our summer professional learning sessions in our trade day catalog. So it's just something we start months, you know, in advance, trying to collect all those sessions and proposals. But we are working on that, and we hope to get that out to the staff to sign up for summer sessions, hopefully, the middle of April. So those are the few updates that I have for my department. Then I guess I can go into, and we will just roll right into talking about the comprehensive plan. So I wanted to make sure, just to, you know, to share a little overview of the process that we went through. So it's been several months of work with our stakeholder team and just to talk a little bit about what the plan is and why do we need it. So we know that it's something that is required from the Department of Education and the state code. And it really, what it's doing is it gives districts a chance to really plan for three years in advance. It acts as a roadmap for us, kind of giving, you know, that direction to our efforts that the team is really putting that time and effort into. Just trying to give some clarity to, you know, some of those goals and things that we have coming up in the next several years. And it's also really intended to help guide our academic growth, okay? So where we might mention a couple other things, it's really honing in on ways that we can, you know, achieve that increased growth. And then, like I said, we had great stakeholder involvement. Dr. Fox mentioned, you know, all the different groups and people that were involved. We had that overall large committee, but then we also had some subcommittees that we utilized as well, that were already sort of like district-created teams that we had to look at some of those subplans that I'll talk to you a little bit about later in the presentation. But I also just want to make sure, you know, this framework that we have to follow is sort of set for us in the future-ready portal. So we work through that process, and it's, again, it just takes us through step by step of what we need to do for the state to have that plan put in place for three years. And we are, you know, on a three-year cycle, we're a Phase III district. So really, as I've mentioned in months past, like our plan's coming due March 30th. And really, the goal tonight was to talk to you, the board, and just present this information to you. We have already posted for some general commenting, posted for review on the website to hold that 28-day review. And then we're hoping and asking for your approval next week for the overall plan, so we can then submit that to the state by the deadline. And I just included this chart for you to take a look at. It's released by the state, really just to mention that, you know, all the things that the comprehensive plan is relating to academics, it's just trying to lead us in a direction where we're continuously trying to improve. We're continuously trying to reflect, set goals, just look at our needs, create a plan. But then we know the hard work comes into place, you know, over the next several years where you actually need to implement and reflect and just continue the work. So it does, it is a cycle, it runs in a circle, and, you know, we'll never stop looking at those things and looking to improve. So to talk a little bit about some meeting accomplishments. So we actually met as a stakeholder group, an overall stakeholder group, to complete the plan requirements over five meetings. And really, what we did was at each meeting, we covered, you know, certain things that were required in the plan tool. So covered the analysis, the review of different sections that's required. Basically, though, kind of broke it down into certain sections where we reviewed the mission, vision, and educational values of the district. We also, you know, took a look at a really in-depth needs assessment where we, by building, looked at that future-ready index data that's available for us from the state and really tried to hone in on our strengths and our challenges that we have as a district. And then also really trying to take a look at some of our own local assessment data and career readiness data as well, just to put that into the needs assessment. And then really, the meat of the work then is after that point, where you're really trying to break it down, you know, and just create those goals. Goal-setting, working with the team, and then action-planning on how we're actually going to meet the goals. So I thought it was really cool that the stakeholder group was able to, you know, the way it kind of worked out was, we had three buildings, and we really kind of like honed into each meeting to break off by buildings to really kind of hone in on what those needs were per building, so we could have goals that were really specific, which was a really nice way to, you know, to manage the plan. And as I mentioned earlier, we also reviewed subcommittee work and other required reports. The state makes you also sort of turn in these other areas of the plan as well. So I know, and again, we've brought this plan up before, where we are constantly reworking and looking at our induction plan for the district. And I know I talked about it last year as well, where the state actually required us to move to a two-year model for this school year. So we had to redo our induction plan anyway last year. Now the state's requiring us to submit it to them for that six-year review cycle which it runs on. So again, I feel like every year, though, we're always looking at the plan itself, really trying to reflect and see if what we're offering our inductees is working and if we can do anything different. So even submitting the plan to the state for this three-year cycle doesn't mean we can't go back and take a look at what we need to. And then we also took a look at some different assurances that we had to tell the state that we were meeting. that we were meeting with student services, safety, academic standards, assessment. And then we actually broke down and really worked on the gifted education plan and the professional development plan. So, what was really nice was the tool itself actually lets you take your goals that you're working on. And as you're action planning with those goals, you can tell the system, hey, we want to make this a professional development opportunity or a learning experience. And what that allows us to do is funnel that directly into the PD plan. So, not every goal that we had required a major training, but it was something that, you know, some of them we thought, yes, this would really, you know, work out for us to do that. So, we moved it into that section. But then there are also some required professional development trainings that we must offer the district as well over the course of the three years. So, we made sure to put that in the plan as well. So, what I tried to do for you was break down our goals per building, but then we had a couple district goals as well. So, overall, looking at eight really hefty, hefty goals, you know, we were trying, they try to give you, the state tells you, like kind of some frameworks for what you should be looking at. So, we tried to keep it at least, you know, two per building when we're looking at these things. But just to talk a little bit about the elementary school first, so I wrote the whole goal out for you, so it's very clear and succinct, but we tried to obviously make it so where we have three years to really action plan and meet those benchmarks to meet that goal. So, really, the elementary decided to focus on ELA, and then I'll show you their second goal in a second here, where we looked at math. But it's really trying to increase that academic growth score where we've spoken to you before about PVAS and what that looks like, you know, for each building. But I think we set some lofty goals where we're trying to meet a certain number in three years. So, we're trying to like take a year at a time and work through some things in the building that will hopefully get us to that goal. And really, our goal is to utilize professional development, our instructional resources, which we know we're constantly, you know, looking at, and definitely for math as well, and through conducting our progress monitoring regularly, so we can, you know, really monitor our students and see their growth and their progress. So, basically deficiencies that are determined by progress monitoring will be remediated through our research-based interventions, which we do have many available to us at the elementary school. So, that is one of our goals. Leanne, did you have a?
Yeah, just a quick question. So, is that saying that you are going to be 90 or higher each year or that you're going to be to 90 or higher by 2028?
I think it's to be at 90 by 2028.
Okay.
So, taking a look at where we were, it's, we tried to space it out like a certain, you know, a certain number.
You're looking for growth each year.
Yeah, and the elementary definitely decided they wanted to focus on their PVAS data where, when I show you some things for other buildings, again, it was interesting to see how each building took what their needs are and decided how they were going to formulate those goals. So, that was one thing. It was always that, kind of that guessing game of like, what's too much? What should, you know, what should our growth look like per year? What should we really aim for that's at least an achievable, you know, goal for us?
And am I correct, we're not talking 90% proficiency or academic attainment? We're talking about 90% growth from where we were?
Yeah, this is that, this is that growth piece with PVAS that they decided to focus on. Because we did with the future-ready. We looked at achievement scores, you know, in buildings, you know, assessments and things that we, that we offer to our students. So, just trying to really focus and hone in on growth was the way that that group decided that they wanted to go. But, you know, what's really hard with these types of plans is that they, I don't want to call them lofty plans, but we had to try to leave ourselves some room. And then also, two goals, the state, that was like, they said, you don't want to go over three. So, we were trying to like, you know, keep it in a manageable, you know, framework for us. So, there's a lot of work that will have to go into, you know, meeting each of these individual goals. But I think the elementary group did a really nice job trying to hone in on their specific needs, really focusing in on ELA. And then you can, I'll take a look and show you the math goal in a second here, but I wanted to make sure to mention our action steps that we have, you know, to try to reach that first goal with ELA, with growth is, we've spoken about this many times before, but really working on our multi-tiered systems of support implementation at the elementary school. Mr. Ward has a leadership team that he is putting through training again. We're trying to, you know, I don't want to say we never had it in place, but really with over time and attrition, we really have to bring that group back together to really focus on what we need to do for the building. So, that's been a goal this year, and it never happens in just one year. It takes time. So, we wanted to make sure we showed that as an action step. And also internal professional learning opportunities for foundations, which is a part of our ELA curriculum, our phonics-based curriculum, our definitely research-based piece that we use scripted, one of our scripted programs. And the reason I put the internal in there is it's just one of those things that we constantly feel like we have to revisit every year just to make sure our new staff members are getting training, but then that we're constantly working together as teams to make sure we're following the program with fidelity. But to build that up, you need to have that internal capacity because it's just something that we're always going to have to revisit. So, we wanted to make sure that was an action step in that goal. And then really working, especially this upcoming school year, to evaluate and choose comprehension materials to help round out what we offer for ELA. So, that's really a part of that action step in that goal. And as I mentioned, and goal number two, you know, kind of dealing with the same thing with the academic growth score. And this one, they worded it, they wanted to go 18 points or more over three years. So, taking a look at that, we're looking obviously at the implementation of a new research-based mathematics curriculum, which incorporates high-quality instructional resources, but is going to provide, help us provide that remediation that's based on need and continuing to do that progress monitoring for math as well to help us get there. And then our action steps with that goal, continuing along the line with MTSS implementation because it covers both, both areas. And then we wanted to make sure we had an action step in there about implementation and monitoring of the new math program. That's going to be just something we are extremely focused on as we move into next school year. And then providing that professional learning for our staff members because that is going to be key. And it's not even just that initial session. It's going to be multiple times where we're going to have to come back together for training opportunities, even working in, you know, smaller grade-level teams to really take a look at what we're doing and looking at our data. So, those are the two, like I said, hefty goals that we have for the elementary school, but I wanted to, you know, just make sure to clarify that they, they do cross over three years, so it is going to be a process to, you know, to really work through those. And then moving on to the middle school, we had some really great and lively discussions with the middle school because I think what Mr. Black's done over the last several years is really work on a schedule for that building, you know, along with Mr. Ward's help when he was there at the building. It's just, it's turning into this, this schedule that is really ripe for opportunity and chances to help our students. And I think that was something that we, the team decided we wanted to focus on as well. So, we wanted by June 28, 100% of educators, definitely with support of the administrators, we're going to start some targeted professional learning with them. And again, realizing that it's over three years, we're going to do small groups at a time trying to work through our grade levels, really that we're just going to focus on continuous improvement of instruction, on differentiation, data-driven instruction, okay? Helping our teachers with that and really just trying to address student learning gaps. And it's based on the master professional learning plan, professional learning agendas and survey data. So, we're going to get feedback from those groups as well as we move forward with planning different events. And then some action steps that we have with that goal, we're just going to continue to review grade-level data to determine student needs during that student support block. That's already been built into the schedule, and I know that Mr. Black has started some things with that as well. So, really, we're just building on what's already been, been going on at the middle school, but we know that that takes time. So, we wanted to make sure to recognize that, that that is a major, you know, major goal of the building. And really just trying to create more fluidity during the block of time based on data meetings as well. And then we really would love to build a bank of teacher resources to utilize that's based on skills during the student support block. So, teachers are not constantly scrambling with what to do with students that have certain needs. And we will base that on skills, but we're going to start with math, that's the goal, and then continue on to ELA when we're ready. And then our last goal at the middle school is that 100% of students will have that student support period in their schedule. And we know that that's being built in, that that time is available for, you know, targeted interventions, enrichment opportunities, academic support in math. So, we tried to focus on math first as well because we know our fifth grade is also going to be utilizing that new, those new instructional materials as well. So, we wanted to make sure to address that because that is going to be a big leap, okay? And a big, a big need for support for those teachers. So, we're going to implement planned supports with structure that are based on data collected through the benchmark and diagnostic assessments that we give at the building. And some action steps for those, again, just as I mentioned, our implementation of our new core math program in grade five. Student support period will continue to focus on the implementation based on need. And it's really just trying to take a look at that student support block to be data-driven to meet the students' ongoing needs in math. And then moving on to the high school. So, taking a look at what our educators needed at the high school, the team decided, you know, kind of keeping in line, I know the middle school and high school had some similar goals in the way of professional learning opportunities for their staff, but really just focusing at the high school and those needs for continuous improvement of instruction. Again, we come back to differentiation. I know Mrs. Bressey is bringing that up and that's something we constantly, we know we need to train on that more and train on that further. And then just helping them with data-driven instruction to address student learning gaps. And again, we will use all of these things, you know, professional learning plans, agendas, and survey data to really help drive of some of those things as we move through the next several years. An action step for that will really be the training for teaching staff on instructional strategies, project-based learning, and data review. And then goal number six in this plan for the high school is really kind of honing in on our administrative support because we wanted to make sure, and we know that that's key for anything to succeed with the magnitude of what we're trying to do. So, we wanted to make sure that goal addressed that, that our administrators are going to support this professional learning program and really kind of dig in and utilize that teacher feedback and support as well to really drive these sessions. And the support from them is going to be provided, observations, walkthroughs, conferences with staff, and we can even put in there, you know, the planning time that's going to be needed to do these things. And the action step for that is really just to support and lead the training for teaching staff on those key items, instructional strategies, project-based learning, and data review. And then our last two goals for the district, I sort of put them on one slide. I know it's a lot of words up there, but the way the system has us do them, I kind of put them together because they really do work in tandem with one another. But really, by June 28, we are looking, that 100% across the board, we're going to be implementing curriculum in all subjects as listed in our curriculum planning and process manual, as measured by, you know, lesson plan reviews, classroom observations, and it's going to be really accessible, accessible for our staff members. It's going to be clear expectations, maps are going to be able to be found easily and just really reviewed and revised per the curriculum cycle. So, that's a major goal. The whole team decided that that was something, we know that that's a board goal, that's something that, you know, you wanted to work on as well. So, we wanted to make sure to incorporate that into our three-year plan because we know it takes time to work through those items. So, we want to make that clear that that is very valuable and important to us. And also, we're really hoping with that curriculum piece also comes utilizing and creating not just traditional assessments, but project-based learning assessments in all subjects as listed in our planning and process manual. So, assessments, again, will be created. We have, the drive is growing, it looks awesome, but it's just going to be something that we have to build over time. And some action steps for those, we know, again, just utilizing our curricular teams by department and grade level, utilizing the manual, revising that, you know, as needed because we do have to come back and look at it to see, you know, the progress that we're making. And then really just kind of looking over and trying to not only develop the curriculum, but take a look at, you know, what resources and things are, you know, something that we need to look at and professional learning needs as well. And then we'll continue that work with the curriculum committee that's going to meet and, you know, to review and define our expectations as we move forward and really just trying to hone in and take a look at the curriculum as it's being developed as a whole and voted on you by the board. We just want to keep refining that and working towards finishing that. So, I always like to bring this up, you know, this template is something I use for our building-level plans as well, you know, that we will bring to you again in August because not only do we have this district plan every three years, but every year, we have some building-level plans that we have to create that are modeled off of the same template as well. So, I just wanted to show you just kind of how we started in the fall, you know, really working with our stakeholder committee to gather feedback. We began revising and writing the plan. You know, we finished the plan. If there's anything that you review or see, it's not submitted yet and we can always refine and add as we see fit, but it's posted on the district website. And our hope is to gather board approval so we can get that submitted by the end of the month. But really, summer '25, and I know parts of it we're already implementing now, but it's really to hone in and focus on those goals because what we will have to do is go back in and report on how we're doing on those things quarterly, which is a really nice part of the process as well. And then just keep monitoring the implementation, provide board updates, and just continue to gather data and feedback to monitor how we're doing and adjusting as needed. I like to say that we created these goals, that they're not so specific, that it gives us a little wiggle room if we move through the next several years and we're like, oh my gosh, we need to add this, or, you know, we weren't thinking about this at the time. It allows us to do that, which is, which is a nice thing. And then really just, it kind of cycles back to where we'll continue to work with our stakeholder committee to continue to gather feedback and just begin revising and writing to start the new cycle. So, that's all I have, just a general overview of what the work that we did for the district plan. But it was an exciting process and I, just everyone that was involved, thank you, and they did such a great job. So, it was, it was, as Dr. Fox said, the conversations were really, really nice to be a part of, so.
I just have a quick question. So, several times you, and I think you may have explained this, the targeted professional learning program, so is that in of itself its own defined plan? Because there were several times you mentioned that people are going to start it. And so, myself, from a data collection standpoint, is, start could be somebody just took one thing, or, and that could happen at the ninth hour of 2028, or start could be you want people to compete, complete 25% of it. And so, what, what does that look like?
Yeah, and that's what-
What do you guys envision when you say start a targeted professional?
Yeah, and that's what's really hard about this too, like I said, to make it so detailed. But we know, based on the key things that we identified in the group that we needed to work on, we're going to be using teacher feedback. It's not going to be just something that's driven by the administration. So, we're going to have to get together to really plan what that's going to look like for each building based on those key tenants that we picked out were really, really important. But again, it's, it's got to start right away, and we're talking about a phased-in approach where we're not just saying every teacher at the middle school, grades five through eight, has to go through this by, you know, you know, the next several months because we know that that's not realistic. So, as we're trying to phase in, utilizing a different schedule, trying to put those supports into place, it's going to take a little bit of time, but it's going to have to involve those teams of teachers working with us collectively to be able to do that. So, again, I know it is hard to put something like this out there because it does seem nebulous, but it, it-
No, I'm just thinking-
Yeah, it surrounds all those conversations that we had relating to those things that we wanted to focus on.
No, I'm just thinking like from a reporting standpoint, how do you report that to the state? Like when they come in to review that, like the Department of Education, like if they're looking at that, how do you, how do you then benchmark that to show, here's the progress that we've made if it is so nebulous?
Yeah, and that's-
What standardization are you using to benchmark that?
And that's one thing that's really, really nice about the state reporting piece is they aren't going to, they don't come in and necessarily like audit this plan or monitor it, but we go in and there's some clear things that we have to put, Marcy, in for each quarter of things that we did to make progress towards the plan each year, which allows you then, if you want to take a look at our, you know, our diagnostic or our benchmark data, and we're going to look at that over time to see how things are growing and how students are doing, we're able to report that. But it gives us a little wiggle room, so we're not stuck on just one measure as well. That's a great question, yeah.
If I may, I also, I participated on this committee. To speak to what you were just saying, Marcy, is one of the things that we talked about in the committee that I was in had to do with empowering our teachers. I'm so excited for us as a district to talk about empowering our teachers, and we've been talking about that since, since we hired Dr. Fox. And I'll just give you one example, like the Penn State Department of Ed says, you could observe teachers directly and do a write-up and go in and pop in and surprise them and observe them and write them up, or you can do a differentiated supervision plan. And when you allow them to do a differentiated supervision plan, then, then the teachers can decide, instead of being directly observed, not that the principal won't be observing them, going in the classrooms, principals should be doing that, but instead of doing that, then the teacher can develop a portfolio, or they could do peer-observed- that, then the teacher can develop a portfolio, or they could do peer observations, or they could do action research on a specific topic. And one of the things we talked about is letting our administrators work with our teachers to specifically target areas of professional development where they will actually do a portfolio on an area, or two teachers will get together and do peer observations on whether differentiated supervision's going on in the classroom, or they will do action research on something. So, one way that, I'm just being very specific to your question, that we talked about was letting our teachers actually grow and, and mature and do research and work with each other as part of their supervision plan, instead of just getting ready for one day, the principal's gonna walk in and, and write up what they saw one day, which happens, and that has to happen by law, I think, by the school code, at least with a third of the staff. But I don't know how many teachers grow doing that. And so, it's just the whole idea, what I heard you saying and what we saw here, I, I love because if you think about a lot of it, especially what I read in the high school and the middle school was, you know, we want to empower our teachers to take on the responsibility to learn how to look at data and to differentiate and help their children to grow, and we're empowering our principals to say, they need to get on the ball and be working with their teachers and telling their teachers, you need to do this. So, this plan, I, I think, especially in the middle school and high school, is the principal's taking the leadership role and the teacher's taking the leadership role because there was a guy, I think Marzano was his name, said, "The number one most effective thing toward classroom achievement is teacher effectiveness." And so, I think what this plan does is it, it takes, I know it seems vague, but it takes away a lot of the vagueness and makes it very specific. And I'm hoping what happens is our principals are going to make our teachers to have professional development goals and work toward them. So, so they look at data and analyze it as, so they could be very student-focused, which I love. And I wanted to just say this, I, in the 36 years of my career, I've been involved in comprehensive planning in many ways. I, I've never been in one where it was handled as well as you did, I have to say. You did not waste one minute of our time. You came into our meetings, the planning, the preparation, everything was amazing. And, and that's hard to do because you're dealing with, you're dealing with Pennsylvania, what? With me? You know, the way Pennsylvania depart, I was trying to think how to say this nicely. The way the Pennsylvania Department of Ed does this is the way they do everything else. To take it and make it into something meaningful that's not a waste of time is hard, and, and you did that. And, and I don't remember the names of our students. Do you know the, remember those?
Yes, Josie Van Wy, Brayden Law, and Garrett, what, what's, Lengel?
These students came, and I, I specifically got to work with Josie.
Yeah, it was awesome.
They were amazing. Some of the feedback from these students was better than I would've expected from, you know, first-year college graduate students in an education program.
Yeah, they were really excited about it.
They did quality, it was all quality. And, you know, I hope as a board, we continue to pay attention to this, and we know what it is and that our goals match it. But I just see it, I know it's a lot of stuff, but just kudos to you and great job. And I have no, I have no doubt this will be something that will be in the forefront of all of, of everyone, not just something that we're gonna send to PDE and approve and move on and not think about ever again. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What were you gonna say?
Just giving a thumbs up. My emoji.
Don't pick on me, I'm sick.
He was actually giving a thumbs up to Kristi. And you too.
And I gotta say, she said exciting. I'm telling you, if you find an administrator at the district level who gets excited about curriculum, keep that person. I love that.
Speaking of exciting, we're gonna dive into just a budget overview number four for our March 2025. And again, what I will promise you, I will fasten my seatbelt because we will go through it. And the reason we'll go through it so quickly is not that we wanna do a disservice to this, it's because we are on meeting number three where we have spent hours upon hours of really going through, and if anybody who's certainly listening and wants a deep dive, we have another meeting yet on March 13th where we'll be taking a look at athletics and maintenance and revenue aspect side of things to complete as we've gone over every expense and revenue code, or every expense code that makes up our proposed 25-26 budget. So, a multitude of different hours have gone into this. So, really, this is just kind of a generalized overview and continued overview at this point. All right, so our budget focus continues to be that of, as you heard from our comprehensive plan, to where we are, we want to continue to maintain our current curriculum offerings and look and see if there's opportunities to continue to enhance those. We want to maintain and enhance our facilities, as we'll be talking about here relatively shortly, and work to provide a budget that is financially responsible for our district and for our community. Some budget considerations, cyber charter, school payments, as you heard from the auditor general, it just came out, the Honorable Tim DeFor made a sounding presentation, then spoke in length about a performance audit, and in that performance audit, spoke in detail about the need for cyber charter payment reform. And I think it's more than time for both the House and the Senate and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, who are elected officials, to take some substantial action on that item and take that action sooner rather than later. Special education, under Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, just continuing that funding and ensuring when it was first founded, it was to be 100% fully funded, and that has not been the case or even close to that. Salaries and benefits and peacers, as that continues to be at any entity in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, a, a public school, you start to really, salaries and benefits and the state educators retirement system make up a majority of your salary. Timeline, we've, we've done a really good job. We started early in October, and here we are in the March caucus meeting, looking at May for our preliminary budget approval, so we'll bump the orange out one more, unless, of course, you're ready in April for the preliminary budget. Preliminary budget basically means you're gonna adopt that preliminary budget, we'll talk more about that in April, what that particularly means and the steps necessary for that. You can always adjust a preliminary budget that sits for public review before the final budget is adopt, adopted 30 days subsequent after that. New budget items to note, we continue, we talked about those, we talked about the Core Switch, Incident IQ, desktop replacements, the Director of Safety and Security, District Police Officer, which would be a new position under the Act 93 agreement, that would enhance the overall compositions of, of Act 44, and several of the Pennsylvania Department of Education requirements thereof. Elementary and grade five math program, that total price is still being determined at this particular point, as we're seeing that going under some significant review. Really, a kudos to Mrs. Walsman, Mrs. Sabinski, and Mrs. Lang, and Ms. Snyder for taking a, really a deep dive at all of the manipulatives that are currently in place, all the materials that are currently in place, and reviewing those and spending time of reviewing those that are in closets and rooms and other places to see what that full review looks like before they go ahead and say, you know what, I think we need A, B, and C. And that just doesn't happen, that takes a tremendous amount of time. So, I really commend them for their work on, on that. Wireless improvements at the stadium and elementary school digital piano replacement. Questions on any items to date before I move on? And we spent some time talking about these items in length prior. Overview of budget expenses, roughly 25-26 budget expense comes in at $39,772,704 to date, could change again by April 13th, plus or minus as we continue to move, it's ever-changing as things come back in as actual numbers, especially when it comes into updated contractual numbers. It's roughly a 3.9% increase from the previous year. Overview of projected revenue, $37,607,851. Again, looking at early stages, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's budget probably, as they continue or will continue, but we're projecting the flat line from last year, including flat line and basic subsidy and special education. But we had an increase last year in the Ready to Learn Block Grant, and we continue to add that as well, that same number as we were told. And again, a lot of things continually and dynamically are changing, and we try to stay as tuned as we can to those dynamics that continue to change and ever evolve. This particular revenue does include the 5.5% adjusted tax increase. And again, as we move and we continue to have our discussions on revenue, any of that certainly can be adjusted upon your, your discretion. At this point, a very high-level deficit at this point projection, I shouldn't say high level, we're starting to land that plane, is $2,164,853 at this point, including the Act 1 Adjusted Index. And again, we'll dive more in detail on March 13th. Looking at historical real estate tax millage review, you can see from 1718 to with the projected, which is 25-26 millage, looking at Perry and Dauphin, you'll see between 24-25 and 25-26, a slight millage increase, even though it's 5.5% adjusted tax increase does not yield a 5.5% millage increase, Dauphin, as well as you go from the 24 to 25. And the reason for a lot of that is the multi-county considerations with STAB, even without any increase, there's variables that go into place that could and will yield a particular county to experience a higher millage rate based upon the other county. We know that the counties are very sensitive to assess value and market value, which get provided to us, and those market and values ever-changing, one rate changes, the other changes as well. It's a very interesting dynamic played out with the State Tax Equalization Bureau and having, being in a multi-county school district. Next steps, we'll continue on March 13th at 6 o'clock to spend significant amount of time reviewing those last two items of athletics, the maintenance, which includes our buildings and grounds and our custodial, as well as spend time talking about revenue. A lot of our revenue is locked in, but we'll have some time to talk about other revenue sources and where we are currently at. Questions on this really high-level overview? Great, thank you. Hearing none, we will transition now and staying with finances, I believe we're gonna have some fun with our fund balance discussion. That was pretty good.
No.
That was not good? I, I, I'm trying. It's better than I was at the budget meeting.
Thank you for effort.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. During the course of our fund balance discussion, I will, Mr. Brousse and I will reference a Fund Balance 24-25 Allocation Recommendation Sheet. So, what is fund balance? Well, there's a lot of things associated with a fund balance, but an overall version of what a fund balance is, it's the difference between a district's assets and our liabilities. It's cash in the bank as well as investments, and it's revenue that a school district keeps and reserves to manage cash flow and use for emergency situations. So, one of the questions that always comes up is why should a school district keep a healthy fund balance? And I believe it was one of our workshops a while ago that we had Raymond James talk about the value of that really healthy fund balance, and one is cash flow. It helps keep our district manage our cap, cash flow by keeping money certainly in reserve, which is important as the dynamic changes within a school year. Just like anything, and within our own savings, it looks at those unexpected expenses, helps cover those such as disasters, capital needs. Unfortunately, state budget cuts could in fact occur that allow us to make sure that we have the right amount of funds in reserve. Helps with some investment earnings, you know, as long as we can continue and the investment year, year earnings in return are healthy as they are now. Certainly, that will not always be the trend or the case, but these investment earnings are guaranteed, these investment earnings are part of the, so they are approved investment earnings at this point. And future needs, the fund balance helps for potential freezes in state funding or delays. I believe it was approximately two years ago, there was potential, as the state budget goes, and if it doesn't get passed, there's a delay in that subsidy that comes that could create a cash flow issue. We were successful in not having to necessarily worry about that or begin to having discussions with our bank because we had enough cash flow to be able to wither any delay in payments that may come through from the state. Some fund balance types, so there are several, but just a few that are common is committed. So, there are funds that have been dedicated by you for a specific purpose. Assigned, they're intended for a specific purpose by you, the board, or an individual that's authorized by the board. So, you could authorize certainly in some instances, the Director of Financial Affairs, to make those generalized assignments. Restricted funds, they're usually generated for a specific purpose that involves some type of legal obligation or legislative obligation. So, for us, you'll see, one of our legally obligated is our membership into the South Central Trust, which is our obligation, which would mean that those funds are generally restricted, or we're restricted to keep a generalized balance within that category. Unassigned, they can be used for any purpose. Money that is unassigned is equivalent to what often gets termed a rainy day fund, and it's used for unexpected expenses and fulfilling revenue shortfall. So, our next steps, our fund balance is enhanced and will, needed to be continued to mitigate our current and financial risks. It also helps with a higher credit rating, so the stronger the fund balance typically can relate to a better credit rating. May not necessarily be needed right now, but could be down the road as a school district. Fund balances, once again, we were told, and we continue to be reminded, that should not be a source to finance ongoing expenses, and they're used as a one-time unforeseen expenditure and not to accommodate issues within the budget. An assigned fund balance cannot be over 8% of the current budget for any, so if there's a, certainly if the, if the board would like to authorize any tax increase, the uncommitted, I'm sorry, the unassigned fund balance has to be lower than an 8% threshold. Recommend that we create, as we continue with our policy work at our next policy meeting, which will be in May, a generalized overview, kind of looks at fund balance a little bit about what committed is, what is uncommitted, what are commitments, and just a generalized kind of guiding principles for us moving forward. It's a pretty basic policy that a lot of school districts have, Fund Balance Policy 620. And I'd like to take a moment at this time to review some of our recommendations on this handout and have a discussion as to where you would like to place and categorize some of our fund balance proposals at this time. Looking at the sheet, Mr. Brousse and I did some work, one thing we want to point out is that the $15 million you'll see under where it says total general fund balance, 15 million, it's actually right now currently about 13.6. That is the money from the 2024 First National Bank note. That is used for, and we designated for that loan for capital improvement projects in our Cumberland Perry Career and Technical School building project. We made a one payment, we have another payment coming roughly in April or in early May. And that money needs to be moved to capital reserve, which allows us then to use it for its intended purpose. The other is our recommendations under healthcare, the South Central Trust, which would be restricted, future peacers costs. And again, one thing it's important to note that these are recommendations, and anytime you can uncommit with a majority of board vote. You have that authority at any point to uncommit any fund balance at your, at your discretion, no problem. Unassigned, or I'm sorry, retire, future cyber charter, 2.2 million. Retirement SIC payout as an assignment of 1.137297. Unassigned at 3 million. Debt service would be a commitment of 2 million, and 2 million special education reserve assigned for a total of $19,55,319.
I have a question regarding the debt service commitment. What is the purpose of that pocket, that bucket? I mean, obviously, I know it says debt service, but we have debt service in our budget.
We do.
Why is that there? What is your thoughts behind putting one of them?
Thoughts there certainly are, could be for future debt service, or it could be if we run into an issue where we need to utilize our fund balance to be able to pay off that debt service. Or make our, a debt service payment, excuse me.
Okay. So, when you're saying for future debt service, just because, maybe this is a question for the whole, that some other people on the board might have the same question. Well, we're not able... We're not able, or are we able, maybe I should phrase it that way, to save money in, for future, for future projects? Like in other words, like if I were deciding I wanted to put an extension onto my house, and I know it was going to cost $50,000, I could start putting money away for that. Can we do that in a school district?
Yes, you could move money into the capital reserve.
And how, but does that have to be used in a certain, like are there restrictions on that? I guess is my question.
Can I ask this for clarification? Are you saying, can we put in our budget a certain amount of money that we intend to put into a fund balance for the purpose of future debt service?
Or maybe, I think to dovetail onto what he's asking, let's say we didn't have a loan of the $15 million, and that debt service right now is 2.2 million. Say we came to the end of that loan, we paid it off. Are we able to keep a line item of 2.2 million that we will then move into capital reserve?
Yes.
Okay, because I, I was under the impression prior to this that, not by you or by anybody here, that we were not allowed to do that, that you can't, I think it was even Raymond, Raymond James might have said that, I thought, that you're not allowed to budget for a line item for future debt service. Because if we didn't maintain that debt service, we would have to quote, find it in our budget.
Yeah, I don't think the term future debt service would be the term we would use. It'd probably be future capital projects, and then you would move that money into the capital reserve. But we couldn't budget for future debt that wouldn't be existing.
But my understanding was from them that by not maintaining a debt service, you weren't able to do that, that you would have to then, years down the road, if you decide to borrow money, sort of find where you have that as a line item. If you're saying we could have a line item, whether we call it debt, future debt service or something like that, then that seems like that's moot. And, and I'm, I'm wondering where I had this misunderstanding of that.
We would, first of all, you'd have to have a surplus. Because you couldn't move money out of a budget that you don't have. So you would have to have a surplus. But you could leave a $2 million cap reserve funding in there if you had a surplus. And then at the end of the year, you would move that money into capital funds, and it would be assigned then.
Okay.
So that would be the way to do it.
Let me ask this then. We borrowed 15, I'm painting with a broad brush. We borrowed $15 million in order to keep debt service in our budget. So instead of doing that and, and having to pay interest on that, but also hopefully making money on that because we've invested it, which legally, if we're not going to be using it, we shouldn't be, whatever. So instead of having to borrow that money and pay interest and invest that money to recuperate that, recoup that interest, let's say we're paying $2 million. Could we just keep that $2 million line item in our budget? And then at the end of the year, put that $2 million under the debt service category of our fund balance? And then as we have a project that arises, we pay for it out of our fund balance. Could we, could we do that? Because the concern we've had and we've been discussing is once our buildings are paid off, needing to keep the debt service in our budget. Can we keep it in there and simply move it into a fund balance? Which is what I would do in my home.
I think you can, but you're not going to be able to move it to debt service because I would imagine that there's a cap on that.
That's a, that's a category, that's an expense category in the budget. You can take your surplus and move it to capital like you were saying.
But you can't move it.
Leave it in the general fund budget, you can't record expenses and stuff like that against it.
I think Phil explained that, that resonated with me with what you just said. So given your suggestion, right now, we wouldn't be able to do that because that 2.2 million is going to be the deficit that we are at right now. Like if everything stayed exactly the way this budget is, we will break even without that $2.2 million debt, debt service removed. If we didn't have that this year, that would make this a balanced budget. So we wouldn't have the 2.2 million to move over because we'd be balanced. There would be no money left to move over. Right now, we're at a $2.1 million deficit on this budget. And that budget is with a $2.2 million line item for debt service.
Which goes towards 15 million, correct?
Correct, but if that 15 million was gone and that debt service was gone, then our budget would be essentially balanced. And if it's balanced, there would be no money to go over.
But we would have, as a board, we would have to be disciplined enough to know, it may show balanced, but it really isn't because we are expecting to have 2 million to put into, to maintain our debt service. And so we would have to be disciplined enough to do that and react accordingly.
I don't think, I don't think you can cut 2 million out of the current budget without a lot of heartache. So it would be balanced, but most likely when you have a balanced budget, if as long as everything's controlled properly, you're going to end up with a surplus at the end of the year because of staffing that are filled and things that you tried to buy that you couldn't buy. Is increased revenue will probably continue. So you may not be able to move 2 million at the end of the year, but you could probably move, you could probably move, you know, half a million or a million, depending on how much you end up with a surplus at the end. But yeah, you would have to not go out and just spend it because you would not by making new programs because it's not that $2 million is gone before you know it.
I mean, I guess the other option is for us to enter into debt so that we have debt that we have to pay as part of our debt service.
And then we have the money.
Correct.
Yes.
But it's why, it's, but you guys are explaining the reason that I voted against it in the first place was because, because I don't think that we need debt just to have debt. Right now, I understand it makes sense, but if you go back 20 years, a bunch of school districts lost money on swapsoms or whatever the, the exact terminology was. Middletown is one of the only school districts in the country that made out like a bandit because they were in and out of it at the right time and maxed all this money, that's how they built all that new sporting stuff they have over there. But this is kind of what that is, where you're making money off of interest off of money you borrowed and other things. So there can be very, very big downsides.
I'm really lost on why we're talking about this when we have discussed over and over again of all of the things that we need to do as a district from a building improvement plan, so.
No, it's not, it wasn't brought up because we wanted to know what we were going to do with the money. It was, we're talking about fund balances. And so the question was, for future, we've already borrowed this money. But for future, is there a possibility of being able to move money into these fund balances? And I was under the impression, I didn't think you were allowed to do that. That was my question. Are you allowed to quote, save money by putting money into a fund balance? The short answer is yes, you can, only if you have a surplus in your budget. You can't just line item in like this is going to be my $2 million savings. That was the question. Had nothing to do whether this $15 million was going to be, be borrowed or being used for whatever we have to do for capital projects. Just now, just kind of following up on that before you answer. So in light of that, that, going back to my original question regarding the debt service and why it's there in this thing, I'm wondering if, if that's what we have it there for. Say we didn't, we didn't have enough money to make this year, this one. It seems to me that that would be sort of in line with cyber charter or shortcomings, shortfalls with special education. Should we just make that an assigned instead of committed for debt service? Meaning that.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
I'm looking at this committed and assigned as well. And I, I don't, I understand what committed and assigned are. I just don't think the Peasars cost is any more committed than the cyber's cost is committed. They could all be committed as far as I'm concerned. And frankly, if I were, my recommendation would be to take the Peasars, the cyber school, and the debt service and the special ed reserve, combine it all and put it in debt service and say it's committed. Not assigned, because assigned then the district adminis, the superintendent could move that money around as needed. Committed means that we would, it would have to come to the board. The board would say, yeah, we need to take a million and put it toward Peasars. But if we're going to do this, if we put it all toward, I think we should put it with the exception of the healthcare and probably the retirement sick payout, I think we should just commit it all to future debt service, which is, which is more in line and more reasonable with something that we definitely need to commit funds to. Certainly more so than, these other things are dependent on whether or not some unknown cost happens, which may or may not happen. And if it, if the Peasars thing or the cyber school thing goes crazy, then we could certainly uncommit some of the debt service funds and put it toward that if needs be. But the debt service is a known thing. That makes more sense to me that we would commit some of this to. That's, that's my thought.
I mean, essentially, yes, if we went with the budget currently right now, that's going to be needed to balance this current budget. And again, one of the things that is important to note that you can uncommit, you can move in and around with any majority vote. We'll get another opportunity to review this at the end of the next audit cycle because you'll do this annually.
Phil's right, I'm not looking at that correctly. We used to have a line item in here, what was it? It was like future building or what capital.
Capital reserves.
But not the capital reserve budget, but there was a committed amount.
That was called future debt service.
Well, then, then, then let's call it all future debt service. Makes more sense.
I'm sorry, I turned my mic off. I think you're thinking Roger didn't have as many categories as this. And I don't remember what that other one was called, but there was one, you're correct, that was for capital projects, and then there was another one. And he dumped all the money in there except for once we started splitting out Peasars and that kind of stuff. So there wasn't as many before. And that money in that, it was, it was committed, but that money could be moved around easier.
And, and I don't remember that, but the reality is, in my mind, the future Peasars cost is leveling off. Future cyber cost is going to be in our budget increase every year. The retirement sick payout probably should stay there. The debt service could just, in the, in the future, special ed reserve, special ed, things go up, they go in our budget every year. In my mind, all of that stuff is going to be level when we do our budget this year, unless something miraculous happens. That hasn't happened since I've been on the board. So it could all be put into the same committed category called whatever. That future building improvements, whatever you want to call that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, it does, but I also kind of understand why this is like this too. So we have a $2.1 million deficit. We can say that that's all coming from our debt service. Or if we do have a big chunk of cyber charter that increases and we have to move money out of the cyber charter, it kind of not only alerts us, but alerts the public that this is where we're pulling this money from. Because we only, we only budgeted $3.4 million for cyber charter, and this year it turned out to be 4 million. So we had to pull it from our thing. I think there's a visual there and a transparency there that I think is good to show this is where we had to pull this deficit that happened in our budget. I, I mean, in that regard, I kind of, I kind of like it being carved out for that just to show that, or whether it's special education mandates that happen and we have to deal with those increases.
I get that visual. I'd be more comfortable with something like future increased electric costs, future increased transportation costs, future increased salaries. This is what is causing us to have a $2 million deficit.
Well, all of that could add to the deficit, right? I mean.
But it's not some of the things we have listed here.
I would suspect too, our auditors probably, I don't know, that would, one it broken down, oh, sorry.
How we have it is probably preferred over just lumping it all to a future debt service.
Yeah, some of the examples that they gave, some people actually broke it out more than this and some consolidated this kind of middle of the road. And they're very similar categories that other people or other schools are, you know, submitting as their fund balance explanations as well.
Because if we're carrying a $19 million fund balance, I think they'd want that more broken down. And I mean, really, it's nebulous because we can move that stuff around anytime we want. We can call it whatever we want, but having a specific plan like this, I think would be.
I, I would argue, and you could double check this, I, I would argue that our Peasars cost has gone up, what, maybe $150,000 each year? So if it continues to go up $150,000 this year, how many years is it going to take us to spend $5 million we have committed to increase Peasars cost? It just doesn't, it, it doesn't seem, I understand everything you're saying. I just want to be very transparent in what we're doing. And that, it's just not a reality. Now, increased electric, increased all the stuff I said, maybe, unless we just want to assign it to possibly increase future building.
I think the reason that Peasars is still accepted, Mike, is because they still have this imaginary dream that it's going to go back down to 12. And that's why, they're, they're considering the number that we have now is still high. And I don't know, someone over there thinks that they're going to ride in on a white horse and save the day, but that ain't going to happen.
We started that when we used to do, and I don't know the exact numbers, but it's about 12%. It was our contribution to Peasars, and now it's like 31%. Or 34. 38, so, and that happened in like a six-year period. And, but now it's level. Anyway, can you explain to me why some are committed and some are assigned, or is that just random?
No, I think there's a balance between the two. I think when you looked at, look at assigned, there may be a need, like special education reserve, there may be a need because there could be an event that triggers the need for that, an emergency situation that would allow certainly the use of that. Same when it comes to the, the ability for future cyber charter. So the ability for, for us to, to reserve it, we would come to you and ask. When it, when it looks at the commitment, those are your particular, the majority of board, being able to move those. But having those assignments.
Assigned, you would not need to come to us, though. Assigned, you would be able to just, like if you had, if COVID happened again, you had 100 students go to cyber charter and our tuition bill went up.
That's correct.
Astronomically, you'd be able to come into here and get and move that out.
And we legally have to pay that, and we legally have some responsibilities we have to do regardless of where this is in the category.
Right, so you'd be able to pull from there without you having to get board approval.
Yep.
Yeah, but you wouldn't have.
My personal feeling is they, it should all be committed. We meet every month. There's no reason, any, the administration, and this is nothing against current administration at all, there's no reason the administration should have to take money out of our fund balance because they didn't have a chance to get it approved by the board at all. We meet every month. And if needs be, we'd have a special emergency meeting. But I would, I would commit all of this fund balance personally, except for restricting the healthcare portion.
And let me ask you this, like committed, committed, you'd still be able to go get it, couldn't you? Because we committed it for that purpose. You don't need, you would have to, we would have to still prove the money coming out of there? Even though we committed it to that? Okay.
And I, that's what I was going to say, Mike is 100% right. That's, it's nothing, I trust you guys all day long, but we don't know where it's, who's going to be sitting in these two seats after you guys are gone. So I think that that's why I would rather see them committed also.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and that's, that's fine with us. Certainly, you're the board, you have, this is your budget, this is your, your, your direction. We can commit it. As you said, we meet on a regular basis, that's not a problem at all. We can spin up an emergency meeting as we have in the past for other things. I don't want to get caught up too much in those. And we can, are you comfortable with these categories? And we will just put the word committed next to all of those categories. That gives you the authority and autonomy to approve or disapprove any of those expenses. The second element I want to add is that, again, you get every year that these need to be restarted. So every year following the single point audit, you get a chance to look at those commitments, and those numbers will change based upon any information or any numbers that get restated or anything that could come from the previous years of fund balance that may be needed based upon projected budget again as we move forward.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make one comment, and then I would like to hear from board members that aren't speaking. I'm, I'm really not comfortable with these categories, but if everyone else is, that's fine. Personally, I would like us, don't yell at me. I think we should spend down some of this fund balance. And in doing that, I think when we start to look at what Panone has approved and the millions that we borrowed, I think it makes sense, and I'm, I don't think I've ever said this before, I think it makes sense to dive into these projects. Apparently, we know we're not going to. I think it makes sense to dive into these projects. Apparently we know we're not going to need a building and that was something we were concerned about, but we know our current buildings need improved. And I think I would be prepared to take the money we borrowed and some money out of this fund balance and commit to doing some of these building improvements and just enter into a contract with an engineering firm, get our buildings fixed with the money that we have and that we could approve and use some of this money in this fund balance. I think it's too high. Now, I would like to hear from people we haven't heard from if at all possible.
I don't really have anything additional to add. I personally prefer the more granular approach to the designation where the funds are. Not overly crazy about the idea of spending down the balance just because, unless we are really, really committed to some of those projects, just because we do know that the cost of everything is going to continue to rise and every year we're budgeting a deficit. Whether we come out to that number at the end of the year is up for debate, but we know that we budget for an increasingly larger deficit every year. Which, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, does make sense because we hadn't raised taxes in a very long time. That's our only method of generating additional income. But we like to take care of our staff and our, you know, increase wages and all, and just buying paper even costs more. So I'm not opposed to doing projects if we have projects that we review here and they are things that are really important to us and they're going to improve the, the education that we deliver and all of those things that we all know about. But yeah, there you go. That's mine. I spoke. You're welcome.
I can go next. Personally, I don't care what you call the accounts. I mean, I'm apt to go with whatever you guys want to do. The only one that I would like to do it, I'd like to make the restricted 3.5. That way we can have a tax increase. And Jonathan, we did have a tax increase last year.
I, I meant before that, but yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to make the unassigned 3.5.
And, right, I, I meant the long period that we had before that where we didn't.
Right.
I have a question regarding restricted. What, what action does restricted? Do we, is the healthcare cost in restricted now in our current fund balance? Is it in a restricted fund? Because I don't remember having anything in restricted and so I wasn't.
It was designated under healthcare South Central Trust in previous years. Give me one second. I can see if I could pull up what it was called.
The healthcare, the 3.7 million, the top one?
Healthcare, and then in parentheses, we had it called non-spendable. So previous years, we had healthcare, non-spendable, Peasars, debt service, retirees, cyber charter and unassigned.
So when you're saying about restricted, I know it says that, you know, that's, that's restricted for that use only and cannot be spent for anything else.
Correct.
Is that ever able to be changed?
Yes, I think it depends. Yeah, and I think it depends on how much we have in reserves. It allows us some flexibility in terms of that. But yes, they would set what that reserve number is.
No, but I meant, are we able to move it from being restricted or is that by law something that we have no choice about? It has to be restricted?
So we have to keep a certain percentage in there based upon our membership to South Central Trust for our healthcare, if I'm correct in saying that.
I'm going to guess, Leanne, there's a.
Bylaws.
There's a, a formula because it's also based off your usage.
Okay.
So if you have a bunch of big claims by employees or ex-employees that are still on our insurance, then that would make that number go up and down depending on what they tell you that number is. So we don't really have control over that number, I would guess. We're told that we have to just keep that number to keep our healthcare balanced.
Okay.
It ensures that if we have some major health thing that comes, that we can't come back and say, sorry, we don't have any money to pay you.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that's why it's restricted though. I think it's not, it's mandated.
I also like the, how it's broken down. I prefer that. But, I mean, we can move that around. If the Peasars is too much, like I'm okay with all that too. And at this moment in time, I'm uncomfortable dipping into that. Like my personal opinion, just with the state of the economy and some of these things are very much in flux. We don't know where they're going to land. So I wouldn't want to take out of here, you know, cut off our nose with spider face.
So, I'm sorry. So. Let me summarize what I think for Dr. Fox.
Please.
We're going to leave it as is, except we're going to, anything that is on this list that says it's assigned, we're going to make committed. Otherwise, it will remain as is. Is that correct? Is that what we've agreed upon for the most part? Are we okay with that? Anyone have an issue with that? Okay. Yes, hi.
Hi, I'm Kelly Nos, Penn Township. I do have a question. It was brought up about changing the unassigned to above 8% and your budget indicated a $2 million deficit. If there's no taxes raised, what would be the deficit with the current budget as of now if it was passed tonight?
$370,000 more. $370,000 more. That's, that's what the tax increase would calculate to.
So then that would, if you pass that budget, then any overture would then just come out of fund balance? Is that correct? Okay.
If, if, if at the end of the year, our revenue doesn't increase enough to offset that, right? That would be if everything stayed exactly the way it was in the budget at the end of, at the end of the year. Not at the end of the, not when we approve it, but at the end of the spending year.
That's a great question though, and it's the scary thing because if, if, if we get to a point where we can't balance the budget with this fund balance, and let's say we're using a million dollars every year from the fund balance, raising the taxes the maximum amount we're allowed by law only gives us $370,000 a year. And if we're taking a million out of the reserves, there would be no way legally we'd be able to increase taxes enough in one lump sum to recover the loss, which is always the concern. And I know from talking to my constituents, they would rather, not that anyone ever wants their taxes raised, but they would rather a little bit of taxes here and there as opposed to one year it gets to the point where, you know, it's just an exorbitant jump, which is always what we struggle, that's always what we struggle with.
And I have a question. With our budget, as we're talking about this, we're only saying a $370,000 for the tax increase, but what were the presumptions made for salary increases? Was that built in when we were building the budget for this year to know what our deficit was actually going to look like?
That I'm not able to, to.
Not in amount, but have we taken that into consideration?
Well, I think we would always have to consider a possible increase because every year the teachers, the teacher salaries have increased just by inflation or whatever. So we'd have to, I would imagine, think of, at some level, we wouldn't go flat with them, right?
Reality is, we're, everything's a guess at this point until that's negotiated.
Well, are the budget line, the line items show that they increased from year to year.
Right. And they increase year to year anyway due to the current collective bargaining agreement, which is roughly, it goes tier to tier from left to right. And there's a lot of variations as to why, you know, certainly an employee who's under the collective bargaining agreement or an employee who is not, or an employee under the Act 93 agreement moves across. Certainly years of experience plays in, certainly additional credits, certainly those play in as well as a teacher, you know, moves down the scale with years of experience and across that scale with credits one earns. So that, that earning potential, you know, begins to magnify.
I think, just again, kind of dovetailing on what Mike mentioned and for your benefit, Kelly, it's like, last year, the Act One index was around 7.8, I think, or something like that. I think we, we increased taxes to like four and a half, about half of it, right? This year, the Act One index is 5.5. So we wouldn't, we can't go any higher than that. Next year it could be two. So the amount of money, it's not like, it's not like if we raised the index every year, we could bank on $384,000. Next year it could be $200,000. So to Mike's point, if we are at a million dollar deficit, we can't tax our way out of that. Does that make sense? You know, so, so I think that's another point to remember is that the Act One index often, it changes every year. And so then the amount of money that we can elicit through, solicit, elicit through tax increase is going to change.
All right. So we will, on the March agenda, place these for commitments because they require your majority board approval. Shifting gears into athletics overview, it's been a little bit. I believe it was early onset. You first started with us, had the opportunity to come and talk a little bit about goals. That fire is still here, I know. And good kind of segue in for that overall presentation in athletics.
Excuse me for one second. You need the mic because we're live streaming. So, yeah.
All right. Good evening. Very excited to talk about the overview of athletics this year. We've had a lot of positives, definitely continuing to improve our programs and grow our programs. So I'm excited to discuss that with you guys tonight. All right. So we'll start with fall sports. Field hockey, girls soccer, we're league champions this year. Both programs also qualify for districts. Boys soccer, most wins in team history, first ever appearance in the Tri Valley playoffs. Football program showed tremendous growth and effort throughout the season. We are starting junior high next year. And I want to be clear, we're not, it's not more money to the program. We're just adding a level to this, this program that we have. We think it's really important, and my coaches do as well, that we have a junior high football program to help prepare these kids for the varsity level. This year, unfortunately, we had many kids go from SMFA all the way to varsity football. And that's, that's a very tough transition. So we want to keep these kids safe. We want the, our head varsity coach to oversee all of our programs and better collaboration amongst the levels. So that's, we're very excited about that for next year. Cross country, we had one runner qualify for states. She took 19th in the district and we had three additional runners qualify for districts.
About the football, just to clarify, junior high is seventh and eighth grade or is junior high junior varsity?
Seventh and eighth and ninth for junior high.
So they're going to be seventh and eighth graders will be playing football. Okay.
Correct. Winter sports, boys basketball.
I'm going to, I'm sorry, I want to back up. Does that mean they will, do, do my understand, first of all, I'm, I'm excited you're doing that. I think that's great. Currently midgets goes up to eight. Is that correct? So we'll be pulling kids out of midgets to play junior high. Have we, not that, I mean, has anyone had this conversation with?
I met with them.
Midgets?
SMFA. Yeah, I met with them.
Are they, I think that's a good thing or?
It was a little tough at first, but once I explained my, my position and what I feel and we're also going to support their programs as well.
Is there a reason we wouldn't do a junior varsity as a, so?
We might.
Because the junior high would be, here's just my thinking, and again, I'm not the best person in the world to talk about athletics, but you would have up to eighth grade, they could, they could participate in football through the midget program. And then you would have a junior varsity program. So you have your ninth graders play. And, you know, perhaps your 10th grade or maybe even the occasional 11th grade student who just started playing, who's clearly not anywhere near good enough to play, perhaps, hate to say it that way, experienced, talented enough to play varsity, but could still get some playing time if you had a junior varsity team. As opposed to the 10th grade kid who isn't all that talented or experienced, never gets to play, can't play varsity, can't play on a junior high team because he's not in seventh or eighth or ninth grade. Has, has that conversation happened?
It has. We really don't have enough, I mean, we didn't have enough even close for a JV program this year. It wasn't even close. If we tried that, it would have been a mess, to be honest with you. So we think that building the junior high program and our numbers for football are increasing tremendously next year. We're getting a ton of eighth graders coming up, a lot more numbers to a point where we could even possibly have junior high JV and varsity at one point. And I think that's what we need to do. I think having a varsity head coach oversee all these programs, everybody collaborates. These kids are learning the basics that they're going to need when they show up to varsity. It's going to help them not only keep safe, but also improve as a football player. And it keeps everybody on that same common goal. And, and, you know, even my interview Dr. Fox and tell you, the first thing I said was feeder programs. We need, we need feeder programs. We need to build these programs from the ground up, starting with elementary, junior high, everything there. So in my opinion, my goal is to have junior high JV and varsity. I want all levels for these kids. However, in my opinion, we don't have the numbers to guarantee a JV team right now. We certainly have the numbers to guarantee a junior high program. So that's kind of what, what our thought was.
Thank you.
Can you, can you just clarify for me though, the PIAA rules regarding? I'm familiar with freshman football, JV and varsity football in high school. If an eighth grader plays on a freshman team, are they utilizing a year of their, their senior year, their high school eligibility by the PIAA rules?
Eighth grade wouldn't, an eighth grader wouldn't play up at the high. So a ninth grader played down to junior high, they can do that. But we don't have any eighth grader, seventh graders playing up.
So you can have a ninth grader play on an eighth grade team?
Yeah.
Even for any sport?
The only sport we don't see that in is basketball. That's the only sport we have not seen that in. However, in other sports like wrestling, this year, we had ninth graders on our junior high program.
So, and which, which schools, because I'm not familiar with schools around here that have junior high programs.
There's a few, Juniata, East Penn. It's, it's growing. However, for me, the idea behind junior high is to just better prepare these kids for varsity. If you guys went to games this year, we were, we were smaller than most teams, but a lot of these kids never played football before. They went from not playing at all or playing very minimal to coming in and playing varsity and going up against a 250 pound lineman from West Perry. You know, and it was a big transition there. So for us, to get a good coach, who we did get a good coach for junior high, and they're all meeting on Saturday, all of our coaches meet now, they, they talk about how we can continue to build the program in the right direction. I think that's, that's what we need. And I think, are we going to win a ton of football games next year? I don't know. But are we going to continue to build this thing to three or four years down the road? We're going to have a program that's going to compete with everybody in mid-pen? That's the idea. That's why we're doing it.
And, and so I guess, sorry, I'm laboring this because I know I'm going to get questions about this once the meeting is over. But if, if you're saying there's only a handful of teams out there that can even, they can even play in a junior high program, is that going to satisfy the desires of the kid that wants to play, which is the reason why you're doing this, right? Because they're not getting that opportunity at the high school level?
Right.
If they can't, if they have no teams to play?
Well, I'll get, they'll have an eight game schedule. We're already almost halfway through scheduling. And I'm getting a ton of emails from, from everybody saying, yeah, we're looking for junior high game. There's, when you look at mid-pen or Tri Valley teams, there's not a ton. But if you look outside of there, there are schools that have junior high. And we're very flexible with that. It's not like we have to play on Friday nights. We can play any day during the week. We play on a Saturday. So I know that I've already had about 12 schools reach out to me about our junior high program and if we started to schedule. So we're going to be able to get an eight, nine game schedule. That's. So we're going to be able to get an eight, nine game schedule, that's, that's the idea.
Okay.
Sir, I applaud you for doing this. And the reason I say that is because to ask a kid who's gone through the midget program to go and enter into a varsity level program, where primarily, we all know, unless you are a stellar athlete, the first two years of being in ninth grade and 10th grade will probably be holding a dummy, or being on the skele team, or the practice squad. And whether you have a JV team or not, this gives an opportunity for the kids in ninth grade to play football in a game. They may not win a lot, but they're playing in a game as opposed to standing on the sidelines, rooting for their team. And I think that by doing this, you're going to build longevity. Every year, your seniors, you had four this year on your team?
Yeah, four.
Okay. How many of those kids in ninth grade quit because this was silly? I'm going to every practice, I'm doing every drill, I'm doing all the conditioning, and all I am doing is wearing a helmet on the sidelines. So I applaud you for doing this. I think there's going to be vast rewards later down the road. And for midget football, for kids that can only play a certain position because of their weight, this gives them an opportunity to play a position that they want to play. So I think there's a lot of pros compared to the cons. And a parent has the decision whether their athlete wants to remain in SFMA or play for the junior high team. My next question is, will you be pulling anybody from this ninth grade team up to the varsity level?
I think, I mean, that's going to be up to the coaches, but I, I don't ever say no. Kid's ready, coach thinks they're ready, that's great. And, and to kind of piggyback off what you said, we want our varsity coaches to work with our junior high coaches. So our junior high kids are learning the same exact offense they're going to run when they go to varsity. They're learning the same defense they're going to learn when they go to varsity. So you put a kid, and you give him that opportunity to do that with a junior high level, the chances of them, when they're a sophomore or a junior, being more prepared to play at the varsity level increases tremendously. So I think, for me, that, some programs are great, and they do it really well. And we have feeder programs, and the varsity head coach oversees everything, and it's like a, it's a well-oiled machine. And I think we need to do that across the board at all of our levels. And I, for me personally, coming into this football season, just seeing only a varsity team, I was just like, no, we, we need to give these kids more opportunity, and that's what this point is. Give them opportunity, get them prepared.
And like I said, I applaud you for moving behind this and making this happen, because a lot of kids just lose interest by the time they're juniors and seniors, and they've chosen a different sport, or abandoned football altogether because, you know, it just wasn't worth their time.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just another clarification for my purpose. So when Jim is saying about pulling a student up to play on the varsity level, that would only be a freshman that could do that, correct?
Well, yeah, freshman, sophomore, yeah, you can't have a.
Yeah, you can't pull up a seventh grader or an eighth grader up to the high school team. It would only be the freshmen that are playing on the junior high team.
Correct.
And you couldn't put a sophomore on the junior high team, could you?
No, no.
Right, okay.
So a freshman, you know, when it comes to the freshman, there's going to be a decision whether they're going to stay down with junior high, or they're going to move up.
Right, they would have to make that decision at the beginning of the year.
Coaches will make that decision, correct.
Right.
Yep.
And that's few and far between. I mean, I give you the example of Tyler Merrill at Cumberland Valley, unless, unless they are a stellar athlete, they're four years behind a starting offensive lineman from an opposing team. So unless that kid is really put together, is basically an all-star, that, that, that is very rare.
Exactly, yep. And moving on here to the winter, boys basketball had a record of 13 and nine, which is fantastic. We won our first PICO championships since 2002. I don't think we are in the championship game since 2012, something like that. So for us to take that home, that was, that was fantastic. Girls basketball, stellar record, 13 and 10. We had Anna Fleischer score 1,000 points. Bachi qualified for states, they typically do, they're a great program, finished sixth out of 40 teams. Wrestling, so same thing kind of with junior high, this is not going to be a financial expense or anything like that, we're, we're doing the best we can, but we're adding girls wrestling. And I thought it was fantastic. It was so incredible watching these girls wrestle. It's been something they've wanted to do for a while, I'm glad we were able to make it happen. We had two girls actually placed in our sectionals, nine boys placed in sectionals, six moved on to regionals. We had one wrestler, James Nguyen, win a regional match. And the team had total of nine wins, they had two last year. So the program is in the right direction. Junior high had a great year as well. But for me, I felt the highlight for wrestling this year was, was adding the girls program. If you ever got to see them wrestle, it's, it's, it's fun, it's entertaining, they're into it. We had four girls this year, I've already heard of 12 girls that want to come in next year and do it. So we're growing the program, and we're doing the right things, in my opinion, to, to build the program overall. Cheer, wow, I don't, I mean, I don't know, they had a clean sweep. They're PICO champs, league champs, district champs. They qualified for states on day one, they got the second highest score. And they were very close to actually winning states, extremely close. It was, it was within a couple of points. So very, very, very proud of our cheer program and what they've been able to accomplish this year. And spring sports, so today was great, we were riding around in the Gator, I got to see all the teams outside, everybody went outside today. Next week, we're in the 70s, so, you know, it's going to be exciting time. We have softball, baseball, junior high field hockey, junior high boys soccer. We have two teams for each of our soccer programs, we have a seventh and eighth grade team for both junior high boys and for junior high girls. All right, so the goals here. You know, I'm still new, being here for less than a year, I'm still evaluating, still looking through our programs, what can we do to better them, what can we do to support our athletes, support our coaches, and better our programs overall. And like I said before, we got to keep building our feeder programs, we need more collaboration amongst all levels. We need high school varsity coaches to oversee all levels, support all levels, and not be present for everything, but show your face. Come down to the elementary, go down there, show your face, help the coaches. Because the more that our coaches on every level collaborate, the better everybody's going to move forward and get through it. So I really want that, consistency with our coaches. We got to continue to support our coaches. Being a, a coach at the varsity level is very, very difficult. It is not a three-month job. There we go. It is a 12-month job for many, many effective coaches. So I want to support them, continue to support them, continue to search for the right formula. We want to put coaches in the right positions. We've moved around a few coaches already, continuing to do that. Many of our coaches are staying where they are, but we want to find the right formula and the best, you know, people to lead our kids. Evaluate the coach, the current coaching matrix, this is going to take one full year. What can we do to keep our coaches at Susquehanna? You know, I've heard stories where kids are high school four years and they have four head coaches. I mean, how is that kid going to ever, ever improve? How is that kid ever going to grow as an athlete? He doesn't. You have four different coaches telling you four different things, you can never grow. So we need to keep our coaches here. So what are some ideas I have that we will definitely discuss in the future? Tears, you know, for our coaches, after a certain amount of years, they get a bump, and we do tiers that way. Postseason pay is something that I've been looking into. And again, this is not something we're looking to do next year. We want to continue to evaluate and assess our coaching matrix, but we have some coaches that coach seven, six, seven weeks after the season. You know, because they're in the postseason, because they have to go to districts and then states. So what can we do to, to kind of show them our appreciation? I think some postseason pay is something we can look into. These are not things that we need to happen, these are just some ideas that I do have. Continue to build our culture. So culture is a word that, if you ask my coaches, I say it probably every other word. I, I love it, I love it, it's, it's important to every program. My father was a superintendent, college professor, he told me culture is important every day. When I was young, I remember it, and I remember one day, I just said, Dad, what do you mean culture? He goes, what's the feeling you get when you walk in? What's the feeling when you get? So on a Friday night, you walk into our stadium, what's the feeling you get? I don't care if you're an athlete, a coach, a ref, a parent, anything, what's the feeling that you get? If it's positive and it's motivating, we're doing a good job. If it's not, we need to continue to work. So the good thing about culture is there's no ceiling, you can always improve it. Keep move, keep motivating our kids, keep, keep setting them up, and, and have that strong culture. And I've said this to our parents, I know it's very, you know, basic, but we just need to work harder than anybody else. Working hard at the high school level, high school winning is, is, you need talent. I mean, you 100% need talent, but is talent everything at this level? It's not. I think it's culture, I think it's having a good leader, good coach, good expectations. And kids just want to work harder than everybody else. I think if you have that, you'll have a higher chance of winning. Clear and appropriate expectations for our student athletes, coaches, and spectators. And strive for excellence. I mean, I want, I want championships, I want district championships, state championships, league championships. It was very nice winning a few this year, but we want to continue to win and continue to build to get to those state championships. Continue to perfect the emergency action plans handbook, athletic protocols. Reflection will support positive change. If you reflect and you see what's going right, what's going wrong, and you really motivate yourself to change, then it's going to be positive. Our impact testing, so impact testing, if you don't know, that is concussion testing for all athletes, gives us a baseline, so if they ever get a head injury or concussion, our trainer can see what their baseline is when they're giving them the test. This year, because we didn't do it last year, this year, because it was so last minute, we made it mandatory for high school athletics only. And it was very difficult to get teams in the computer lab, we had to make schedules, we had to get everybody in. Next year, talking to our trainer, we're going to make it a take-home test, and we're going to give it to junior high and high school. Everybody's going to take it, and they're going to take it at home. And I think that's something that, that we need to do for our junior high. Right now, junior high is, isn't mandatory, but if there's a parent, hey, I want to give my kid the impact test, I want to make sure, we will 100% support that, and we will get that kid in the computer lab, and they will get the test on. Emergency action plans with added field locations, so I spoke with our trainer, who, again, you know, just like me, it's her first full year here, you know, full-time, so it's, it's been, both of us are kind of growing and learning as we go, but she's going to add field locations, and we're going to change our EAPs. Right now, we have emergency action plans for all sports, but we want to make these emergency action plans sports-specific. You know, field hockey might have a different emergency action plan than football has. Football might have a different emergency action plan than basketball has, it really just depends. So we want to make these more sports-specific and give them to the coaches as a resource. Sports physicals, the papers is getting, you know, my old school, we did digital, everything was digital, everything was online. You could even take a picture of the paperwork and submit it, and we would get it on file. So talking with trainer, that's something we're looking to do possibly next year and put everything digital. More detailed specifics were needed. So like, a doctor note policy is something we've, we've had a lot of conversation about. For example, if, if a kid gets a head injury and goes to see a doctor, and the doctor says, you need to go see a specialist, we can't give that kid the concussion protocol and clear him, they got to go to the concussion specialist. So some of those things, we just need to be a little bit worded better in the handbook and better communicated, so we're going to work on that. We want to better our resources, so I want managers to be team tutors. I mean, I think if you have a manager on the team, I think we check their GPA, I think we check their, their schoolwork and how they're doing in their classes. And they could also serve as team tutors to help our kids stay eligible, keep our kids staying motivated, and have a resource for them. Importance of academics communicated effectively by coaches, I think this year, our coaches did fantastic. I mean, I do eligibility checks every Friday, and we've had very few ineligible across the board. It's been really, really good, and our coaches are doing a really good job motivating our kids. Keep, keep these kids in athletics, support them, motivate them, we need these kids. Some of these kids, I don't know where they would be without athletics. They need them, they need it to motivate them for their classes, they need it just to, just to have in their life, to be able to go to practice and, you know, hang out with your team and get, get better at your sport. I think that's really something that I want to continue to push all of our kids to do. And then something we want to add is all-year ticket passes. This is something I think is a really good idea. Family pass, now, we haven't gone through the specifics of what does that mean, does that mean a plus one, plus two, does that, how much are we going to charge? I think that those are all specifics we're going to finalize. But to me, I think offering that option for a family to get an all-family pass and to go to all of our events, I think that's something that I think is a great thing to give our parents. I think it's something that they might want. I see some of the same people at every single event, and I don't want to know how much they've spent. If we just give them a one-ticket pass, and they can have that little pass or badge or whatever it is, they get into anything. So I think that's something we're going to look to do as well next year. Continue to host, there's our scoreboard there. Host, host, host. So we hosted a PIAA state field hockey game, we hosted a PIAA district field hockey game, we hosted a PIAA state football game, we hosted the wrestling sectionals, we hosted for boys and girls, TVL championships for soccer, TVL championships for basketball, League Track Meet we'll host in the spring, we hosted PICO field hockey, PICO boys basketball, PICO cross-country, and PICO track and field will be hosting as well. I want more. I cannot tell you, I'll give you an example, that PIAA state football game, our boosters made over $3,000 in concessions, just hosting that. I mean, this is like, we, we have a stadium, we have a video board, it is a lot of work, it is a lot of hours, but the people that I've been able to work with love being around sports and love being around athletics, and they have no problem doing it. So I want to host more. I know the state PIAA gave us plenty of compliments, told us we ran a really good game, really good sectionals. Now, the sectionals was, was long, I wasn't expecting, you know, 12-hour days, they're very, very long. But again, we just got awesome feedback. Bob Kaufman, who's been like a mentor to me, just told, told me we did a really good job, and it's something we want to continue to do, and we have a very good reputation with the PIAA right now, and I want to continue that. They took, they wanted us to host three or four more state football games, we just couldn't do it last minute. But it's something I want to do moving forward, because it's such a big increase to our boosters, such an opportunity to get more money for our boosters. Junior high football, when you start girls wrestling, let's add more money into the boosters so we can support that. But like I said, I want to host more video board now, once I learn how to use it, once we learn how to use it, we're very excited for it. So I think that's, that's definitely a goal for us as a district. And I think that's, that's it, that's my last slide. So any questions, anything like that, I'm, I'm up for it.
Oh no, Mike's looking at me going, I know you've got something to say. Okay, a couple things. First of all, thank you for all your excitement, it's, it's very, it's very evident when you're speaking and in the preparation of just even coming to speak to us tonight, so I really appreciate you being here. Quick question about girls wrestling, love the fact of girls wrestling, I'm a big fan of girls wrestling girls, not girls wrestling boys, so I think that's, that's great. That being said, I was a little taken aback when somebody shared the Instagram post that we had a girls wrestling team, because I, I didn't know that, and as a school board member, they're like, we have girls wrestling? And I'm going, we do? So I understand that it didn't, it wasn't a budgetary issue this year. So when they, when they're going to meets, are they always going to where the boys are wrestling, or do they wrestle at different places?
Say about 80%, it's where the boys wrestle.
Okay. Because like, as you can say, say, you know, you said, we had four girls this year, you already got 12 next year. So that's going to be uniforms, that's going to be transportation, the coaches, and so it does end up becoming a, a budgetary issue for us. Not that it's a concern necessarily, but it's something that, as, as a school board member, we kind of have to think about that. Yeah, it's a financial obligation.
So the coaching, well, the one thing, the coaching salary, the money that we pay coaches for the wrestling program is going to stay the same. The coaches are going to, you know, again, that's something we're going to, we're going to dive into a little bit more and get approved by the board if we're changing any coaching matrix or changing anything like that. But the money isn't, we're not spending any more money.
But as the program grows, it can, it will, it can be, and will be, even in terms of numbers. And I'm not saying that I'm against the idea of girls wrestling, but I do think it's something something that the board should have evaluated. And the reason being is that we were just presented, you know, last year about starting a golf team, and we didn't agree to that at that point because of evaluating where it was in terms of cost to the school. Now, that was a completely different beast, right? You've got to pay for rental fees of courses, everything else. I get all of that, and I don't know that we would have not gone along with girls' wrestling. I think it was just making us aware of it before the horse got out of the barn, if you will. You know what I mean? So, that aside, I'm excited about the potential for what that might become for those girls. The season pass thing, I think, is a great idea. We used to have that here.
I know. I heard.
Yeah, so I think that's a good idea to bring that back. I think that went away post-COVID, I think, is that when it kind of started going away. So, I think that's a great comeback. I was thinking, and I think I brought this up to Mr. Quigley last year, and it was kind of not, I don't want to say the word poo-pooed, shot down maybe, shot down. Was charging for track meets? I'm coming from this from a track mom. I was for, and I think there's, I often wondered why we don't. Now, the reason he said was because, you know, you've got people that are outside watching the field events that don't ever have to come into the stadium, so then they don't have to pay. One thought that I had, maybe Jason could speak to this a little bit, is when Greenwood has field hockey games, they charge by the car. So, as people are coming in, they get a one fee for, doesn't matter how many people are in your car, five bucks, whatever it is, and then that's how they bring in income for that meet. I don't know if that's something, just throwing it out there, is something maybe the possibility of doing.
I already spoke, Dr. Fox. I mean, we said that, I mean, we're not going to do it this spring because it's last minute, but we are going to look to possibly start selling tickets, even possibly for baseball and softball, depending if we can. It's tough because baseball, softball in particular, we need to really have a plan in place because there's many different places that a fan can come in and sit. So, having that ready to go is something we're looking to do. Us in Greenwood are the only schools in Tri-Valley that don't charge for junior high basketball. So, next year, what I want to do is I want to stack all the games at the high school, so we will charge. We will have, you know, junior high going at four and five o'clock, and then JV at 6:30, and Varsity at 7:30, and we stack all the games up, so we are able to charge for that sport. But we have discussed this. I think next year, it will happen. I think it's something we're looking to do because we charge for everything else. I mean, you know, in my opinion, we should be charging across the board for our varsity sports in particular, so it is something we're going to be looking to do. Now, the stadium for track is easy. I mean, you charge, just like, they have to come through, charging them.
I think the argument was if your kid threw discus, they don't ever have to come into the stadium, and they don't have to for javelin or shot. So, that was where there was that disconnect, and that's why I thought, well, if that was the concern, then charge per car, like they do at a cross-country meet, you know, for districts. They don't charge because you, how do you do that, right? You know, so they just charge per vehicle. I mean, just a thought.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate that.
Yeah. And then, my final thought was on your last slide, when you said you want more, more, more. I have a thought. So, now with the digital sign, I think I would love the idea of hosting a track meet. Invite, invite. I know that takes a lot of work. I am going to be willing to help with that, so I will volunteer my time so that if the coaches that are listening out there are going, Leanne, I'm going to volunteer to help. But one thing, and I think I brought this up to Coach Bell once before, and I know the hang-up here is the fact that we have Tri-Valley and Pico the same week, which I think is, I think is a disaster personally, and I think they do too. I just feel like it's always been done because that's just the way it's always been done. But there is some room here in this region for a last-chance track meet for those students that don't qualify for their league championships, particularly the midpens. A lot of small schools around here don't get into the midpens because they're AAA-dominated in terms of the thing. So, I'm thinking futuristically, that could be a source of a lot of revenue. They do it in swimming at Northern, and it is hugely successful in terms of the people that come and participate in it. So, just something that, as you're putting on your...
Yeah, Dr. Fox mentioned that to me as well, about hosting something like that.
Oh, you did? Where'd you get that idea? Little birdie put it in his ear.
Listen, I think it's a great thing that we do. I think it's an opportunity to not only help other kids, but to obviously get a good, continue our good reputation of hosting, but I'm all for it. I mean, you're going to see next year, we're going to be hosting a lot more things, and that's something we can definitely look into.
The other thought I had, if that doesn't work on the backend, is on the front end, and I talked to coaches about this, in fact, was a black and orange invitational, where it would be all high schools that their colors are black and orange. There's quite a number of them in the local area.
Yeah, we had the sectionals, and I had no idea if it was our kids, right? They're all wearing black and orange.
Yeah. So, we were at a meet last year up in Milton, and I think they were black and orange, and they actually came up with that same idea. Might be something maybe we could do together with another school, so, just never thought. So, yeah, I think with the digital scoreboard, that opens up a lot of opportunities for utilizing that beautiful track and that facility that we have for more than just a couple of dual meets and an invitational. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Markowitz. Please keep up the good work, and thank you to our incredible administrative team for the support, and most importantly, or importantly, thank you to our coaches and to the parents and guardians for all of your time and efforts as well because it certainly is a team effort. And interscholastic athletics is certainly a continuation of the classroom environment. And we always say, Tom, and Tom, again, that it's not just athlete, but a scholar athlete. The scholar piece comes first. All right. Going to transition now into our last presentation for this evening is our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing and building envelope next steps. There's several handouts. Yeah, it's, I wanted to put together a nice packet for you as well.
Whose budget is this paper?
This was surplus paper.
We're going to have to go back.
Some discussion, discussion and next steps. Following our initial presentation from the February's meeting, we asked for the direction and feedback from you as a collective board to begin that process of ranking those estimates, and we utilized a lot of the existing building envelope and MEP systems evaluation dated January 31 of 2025 from Pinoni, and in particular, pages 40 to 42. They did a nice job of explaining and ranking some of that information pertaining to that study. You allowed us to look at that and see and then priority rank, and then providing a report to you for some deeper review and discussion. Ultimate goal would be to look for the possibility of going out for what we would call an RFP or request for qualifications following our March board meeting or April board meeting to develop a timeline for our next steps. So, let's talk about some of these items that we sought as an administrative team that are necessary for the overall general welfare and health, if you will, of our current facility and structures. And again, when we talk about these items, the ultimate goal certainly is to see what we can do to lump some of these items together because, again, when we look at an overall staff, it would really be a project management staff that would be in a current existing, it would be Mr. Howell, myself, Mr. Brow, so it would be in our building principles. So, we'd really look at leveraging our partnership with Pinoni, and we look to leverage some type of guaranteed energy savings or what we would affectionately known as a GISA-style project. But looking at some of these projects, we know we have some roof replacement and treatment. We've done a really, I think, overall, had a, and we have, a master plan when it comes to looking at some of the treatments, roof treatments to preserve the life. We just had a meeting with our roofing partners, Tremco, that we've used in the past, and there's a couple of sections here that really need roof scanned here at the high school to see if there's any protrusion of water down into the insulation that would require a little deeper than just a treatment, some ripoff and replacement of insulation. So, that's a needed aspect. And then, of course, the aspects, there's one section...
Just to stop about roofs before you move on, if I may. Have we decided, I'm not, I just, I don't know. Have we decided if we already know it's going to be better to treat our roofs or whether or not we should replace any of these roofs? Do we, have we had that conversation?
So, internally, we've had that conversation, and we had that conversation internally because we've already invested in several aspects of roof treatments already that have warranties of 12 years, 15 years, in some aspects, 20 years. So, ripping off of that membrane when, in fact, it's still under warranty is not prudent at this point.
So, I guess I'm just thinking over the years that we've had these conversations. So, in my mind, I'm ticking off, we're not going to rebuild, we're not going to build a building, and now I'm ticking off, we're not putting on a brand-new roof anywhere. Is that correct?
At this current time, we are not.
But, well, we're going to sink more money into the roofs, which tells me it should be a long time before we are going to replace the roofs. Is that...
The current roof treatment system that we'd be looking at in certain parts, yes, would have a warranty of approximately 12 to 16 years.
Fair enough. All right. Thanks.
If, in fact, they are, if the conditions warrant that that type of material can be used on it, absolutely. And that will be determined by roof scans, how far down, if any, that the insulation is wet, and they'll be able to discern that from roof scans. At that point...
Sorry, just to clarify then, so, the $3 million right now is based on a treatment, not a replacement on any one of the schools?
That's correct.
The elementary school currently is still under warranty. High school window replacement was identified in the project at the windows at the high school. There's several systems, several gaskets, several layers that are failing, and that replacing the windows with an energy-efficient window system would be prudent. Next would be an HVAC replacement system at the middle school that would be replacing the system with a non-condensation piping system that is efficient and enhances dehumidification. You'll see that located on page three as well of the packet or the study that we provided internally.
I'm sorry. Can we go back to windows just briefly? So, we're just talking about classroom windows. I'm thinking of the whole basic front of the building where we, a couple of years ago, invested in the film that allows you to see out but not see in, like, the front of the building. Are we just talking about, we're talking about classroom windows, or do we not know the scope?
So, at this point, the scope has not been discerned, but it would be classroom windows, and any type of window, if replaced, could you have that filming put back on it as they build different style of windows?
If we want to. I guess the reason why I'm asking is I didn't get all positive feedback when we did that, and it was, if I remember, pretty costly. So, I'm just asking because if we do that, we may want to have that conversation. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think there's any, when we talk of windows in terms of that scope, any, I don't get to any of the sense from this study and previous conversations to do any of the storefronts, so it'd be any of the front of the buildings with the doors or any of that glass moving forward. I think an inspection of those gaskets and inspection of those seals is necessary, but I think it's looking at going all the way across, all of the windows that are protruding as you see from the steel, kind of that aluminum basis that you would see, all the way across that long corridor heading down.
Yeah, I think a lot of those, the windows in the front of the building, including the counseling suite as well as some of the stuff down near the gymnasium, that was all replaced, well, it's been 25 years ago when they redid the renovation. But the other windows in the classrooms have not been replaced since the original building, so I was just, as far as I know. So, I was just wondering, I guess the scope would probably be more so the original ones.
And in terms of windows, you also say on here that you're going to do down at the elementary school too? Is that still the plan?
There are some windows in the stairwells at the elementary school that have some broken gaskets to them, and there's some water that's getting in between the panes. So, the hope would be to be able to replace those window panes and still keep the windows in place and sealing those up.
Okay. Thanks.
I think when we did a walk at one point, we did identify some of those, and we can, I can show more detailed pictures at any point if you would like. Heading back to the HVAC would be a complete HVAC project that would be removing the 20-ton chiller, replacing that 20-ton chiller, looking to see if some of the existing piping can be used, but making sure that that piping is not condensate piping where it would continue to basically drip and condensate as it's designed to. It'd be full new insulation. The ceiling tiles would need to come out, and it would be more efficient with the potential for anything from like a tall vertical heat pump to anything or any other design that could be rendered by those who would design these types of systems. Certainly would look at the utilization. It would remove our current multi-stack chiller that is not in operation and has not been in operation since it was first put in. So, it would involve the ability for more climate control, more heat efficiency, more system efficiency, more climate, as well as more dehumidification that's necessary because right now, we have to run our dehumidification based on the heating system itself, so it's not relatively super-efficient.
Is that the only school that doesn't have geothermal?
That's correct.
Is there any possibility of putting that in there?
So, there certainly is, but the cost of geothermal, we'd be looking at approximately $8 to $9 million.
Is there any rebate money available still with that? Because I thought there was.
I'm not sure if the Inflation Reduction Act is still a possibility at this point. I was told that I can look into it, but I think at this point, projects are not being addressed.
But even other, even outside of federal money, is there any state money? Because I thought that qualified as every normal...
Well, there's a small rebates, and there's always the opportunity, and that's what some of the power of some of these projects would be. And same even with a, just an HVAC replacement system, there's the possibility of some small rebates from PP&amp;L. There's the ability for us, when the grant, if the grant window opens from the Department of Community and Economic Development, we would have our ability, we already have the study done, we would have the ability to apply for any of those once again. But in terms of a return on that, I don't know fiscally if the Inflation Reduction Act was here and it was 35% reduction on it, it may make more fiscal sense to go geothermal, but I don't think so at this point.
Even with the cost savings on the long run with it?
Yeah, I would have to explore more into that and to see if we have the size to be able to put that system in. Because of our system at the elementary and high school does take a lot of that ground already and where we would put that type of well system in.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. Exploratory dig and repair. The back wall here at the LGI needs to be excavated. That wall needs to be reviewed to see how far down. Some type of vapor barrier needs to be installed. Drylock needs to be put on. A type of French drain needs to be installed to keep water away from that wall, and I'm sure some type of rock that would absorb some of the water needs to be put back in as a backfill. So, lots of handwork that needs to be done on that, or that wall will continue to bring in water.
If I could speak to that for a minute, and Phil, you may recall this. I think, I'm pretty certain we did do that, like, because this used to leak more than it does now. It was like waiting in here, if you remember correctly, Phil. And I don't know if anyone has talked to Bob Finnan or reached out to Bob Finnan, who was here at the time, but I do believe the exploratory dig was done, and I do believe there was a French-style drain put in. I don't know how much of that you remember, Phil, but we might be able to avoid a lot of that and just go straight to the, you know, putting in the vaporizing barrier or whatever. But we should have some records of that, and if not, Bob Finnan would be the guy to call. Do you remember all that, Phil?
I know we did something because it leaked before.
We've had this problem since this is built, and we had equipment. We dug that all out and did stuff, so I just, there's probably records somewhere people might not know about, but if no one's called Bob Finnan, I would suggest maybe we do that might save a little bit.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I think that's, I think it used to slow more towards the...
Absolutely. Yeah, it did. And they put a French drain in.
Something they put a French drain in. Maybe the French drain is just broken.
That could be. Yeah, that could be. Next item would be bleacher replacement. Replace the current banks of bleachers at both the middle school and high school with ADA-compliant sections in both of the gyms. That's an item I believe we've discussed several times. It would include handrails, side rails. It would be some type of plastic composite. One of the things that we are a little concerned about is, in fact, if the motor of those bleacher banks goes, we're not sure if it can be replaced. But that would be a goal of ours to do those as well. The next is the EFIS restoration. We talked about EFIS, or I'm not sure if I'm saying those words correct, but it's basically exterior insulation and finish system. That's what's all over the high school, parts of the middle school, but it's above. The enemy of this system is water, so anytime water gets inside of it, it will definitely corrupt it very quickly, and it will start to protrude and pieces will begin to crumble. So, what the plan would be is to go around the building, and they would cut about five So what the plan would be is to go around the building and they would cut about five inches to eight inches, seal the bottom so the water would not get up underneath. As you see, some of the down spots are coming down and water gets up underneath it. Then it would be to finish the entire system and paint. That number may be a little bit low, again, until the scoping audit occurs. That's the number that was provided during this. And again, these are just estimated numbers based upon the study that was provided to us. And it could fluctuate based on real-time scoping audits. Going right along with projects would be the middle school ceiling replacement. If you've been to the middle school, you'll see there's a multitude of different ceiling tiles. And certainly those ceiling tiles get replaced on a regular basis as the condensate piping leaks, the insulation fails. And those ceiling tiles continually need to be replaced. You'll see some in different parts as well, but that's the age of the buildings and replacement of different piping that needs to occur. But looking at what a refreshed middle school would look like would be, since if they're doing a HVAC replacement and the ceiling tiles are already down, to put new ceiling tiles in, to make it so it's brighter, make it so that it's, it's a newer, a finished look. And that would be the same with lighting and controls. So you're really taking now a look at making sure that those lighting and controls, which helps in terms of the energy efficiency, which making sure that, that it all fits in one particular system and that system has synergy between the two. Flooring replacement at the middle and elementary. If you've been through certain parts of the middle school and elementary, you'll notice that there's some kind of laid vinyl rubber pieces that begin to bubble and crack and pop. They've done a good job over time to take care of those, but that's just, that's just age. And removing those sections, sometimes they look like they, they're dingy, but that's just age and the qual, and the, the type of material that it is. It has nothing to do a lot of times with, with it not being unclean. And removing those and putting in some type of flooring that doesn't require wax. So our, our custodial and maintenance team cannot use those harsher chemicals, can basically use a floor scrubber, clean that thing and be ready and move on to the next and move on to the next. Restroom upgrades at the middle school and high school. So looking to upgrade some fixtures and flooring, modernizing that, looking at some type of flooring that can be taken up, easy to clean, easy to maintain, and making those bathrooms some a little bit more modern in, in all of those areas. Van replacement. We have, we'd look to replace two 15-passenger vans. Their year is 2013. One van has 68,272 miles on it. And if that was my own personal car, that would still be fine. Still have a lot of life on it. Van three has 70,450. Again, that would still be broken in. But when you're transporting students, looking at the age and some of the new safety features on a 2024, 25 model versus a 2013, and when you have faculty and staff driving, it makes a big difference when you look at some of the age of the vehicles. And looking at a UTV replacement, if, if that can be used for a capital replacement, would be to remove that item from the generalized budget. And looking at a new item that would be used for maintenance, that would have a salt spreader and a snow plow or snow blade for the front of it that can be taken out. They use the UTVs a lot on campus. So I'm going to just pause there for a second and ask if there are any questions or anything that shocked you, that shocked you with some of these items in this particular study that I shared, based upon the study from Panone and based upon our own kind of priority ranking at this point.
Do you have a grand total?
Twelve million, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
So say it, 12 million.
Five fifty-six.
Five fifty-six.
And I did not particularly add all of those up because I, again, I don't know the actual, that's a ballpark number at this point until a full scoping audit can be done. I tried to put these in some priority ranking as well.
Dr. Fox, the only, the only thing that stood out to me was the cost of the ceiling tiles. I, I thought that was.
Yeah, yeah, I think just because of the amount of it. But again, I, we'd have to take a look at what that, and I was just using the number that was in the study. But depending on what that scoping audit looks like, it could fluctuate a little bit.
I mean, would there be a need to replace the grids or just the tiles?
Yeah, I'm not sure. That really, really comes down to the sizing of it, what, what offerings, what types of tiles are available, what that would look like.
Yeah, I just, of everything that you pointed out, I just thought that was.
Oftentimes they get broke when they start to put the piping up and those types of things, they fall down pretty easily. They start to rip in different pipes and start to put those, those types of systems in. They, they break pretty easy.
I can tell you the cost is in the ceiling tiles. Prior to COVID, ceiling tiles that you would use in here were about $10 apiece. We just bought some last week, they're $33 apiece. So each ceiling tile is $33. Now they're going to get some kind of discount because they're going to buy such a mass quantity, but.
And the benefit would be.
They tripled in price since COVID.
The benefit would be acoustical?
Yeah, yeah.
How important is that, like?
Well, acoustical and also.
First of all, make sure you put them in the room where we have our discipline hearings at the middle school where we can hear.
Well, you know, it's ironic you say that room that we are in because it is, it is a product of the, the, the heat pump that's in there. And that's working overtime and it shows some of the age and that thing shutting on and off and working loud. You, with a new system, you, that's one of the goals, it's softer. And that should help the acoustics within the room. Yeah, the ceiling tiles should help with acoustics. It really is just going to give a cleaner, fresher look as well.
We just adopt like the new industrial look where you leave everything open and spray, spray paint it black.
Tried it out over there.
I know, listen, it's, that's the new like open ceiling look.
So based on the current conduit that's in the open ceiling look, I would not. And coming from a place that had an open ceiling at one point, everybody wanted to go with those acoustic tiles because of the noise was shared between different points. But lots of restaurants go with that and I think it's a really interesting look. They use different cloud tiles or cloud tile clouds and it looks pretty neat a lot of time.
So Dr. Fox, what, what, what do you need next from us? I mean, if, if I were to take the leap, I would think once you got more definitive numbers, it makes sense to me that we would just throw all of these things individually on the agenda and vote whether or not we agreed with that expense or not and move forward. I, one thing I don't want to do is what we did in the past and spend hours and hours and hours and months and months and months discussing, think we borrowed some money, we have some money, we took, we have an engineering firm. You have a recommendation. So when, when you're ready, I think, and that's, the board feels different. I think just put them all out for us to vote on individually. And I don't, I personally don't know that I would vote on all of these, but certainly I think it's worthwhile. I appreciate all the work you've done and Panone has done and whatever we can do to make it happen.
Just one thing, there were a couple of things came to my mind when you were talking about a lot of the changes that were happening at the middle school. And I don't even know that this can dovetail with this or not. But if you're replacing the ceiling tiles and the HVAC and all this other stuff, is there anything at the middle school that needs to be reconfigured? That this would be the time to do that or not? You know what I mean? So I'm thinking back more to the Crabtree and Roarbaugh study that had some things that maybe because you're ripping all this stuff out, this might be a time to look at that. And I, and I, at the same time, I was also thinking a little bit about the Crabtree and Roarbaugh kind of bringing, merging those two together. Discussion about the music room or something here at the high school. Is there anything that we can pull out of this money that we could address that as well?
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of things. I think the first thing we need to do is tidy up our building envelopes here in our systems. The one thing, and thank you for asking what you, the next steps. I think the next step is if you're in agreement to allow me to engage or ask you at the March Agenda to consider, and I have the proposal here I would like you to take and look at for Panone, for 12,500 to serve really to help put together proposals, advertisements and scoring. Because a lot of what I believe these items here, short advance, could be grouped together as to what, what is called that guaranteed energy savings. Or, and they're provided and done by what's called energy service companies. And it's a mechanism that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania uses for a lot of its own buildings. The federal government also uses. The idea behind it is there should be a commissioned study after, between 10 and 20 years. And the savings you get from the energy saved during these projects should help pay for the projects. So yes, there'll be a capital outlay. We will be spending some of our money upfront if that's a possibility. But the recruitment of those funds should help go back into our general fund. Is it 100% guaranteed? Absolutely not. They say it is, but it, I'll tell you right now, it is not. And trying to recoup it after is very difficult. But the idea is that these are supposed to help with an energy savings and they'll tell us what some of that savings per year will be. And we should realize some of those savings. And they have to help study some of that, those and report back to us as to what that is. Now, there's a lot of variables. They could say the temperature was off two degrees, you had to have it locked in. There's a lot of things. It's honestly a procurement method to be able to bundle certain, you get that scope of, scope of commerce, if that's the right word to use, or economies of scale by doing certain projects together. I would like to engage Panone to help that, to help and, and bring them in. And maybe after looking at this, they may say, you're way off. I don't know if this would really even make sense. You may want to separate A, B and C. But I, I would rely on their expertise as an engineer because I could go and go on a long bird walk and it'd be the wrong walk. And I trust them and I think they, they will, they will do what's in the best interest as they have right now with some of the studies thus far. That would be the first part. The second part I would like them to do is you're right. We have not really taken a deep dive into some of those other areas besides our initial result of here's some boxes, what these boxes could be. We know we have space. We have space across from the cafeteria. We have some spaces in some storage areas. We have spaces here. What could those spaces look like? How could we redesign those spaces and use? So engaging RLPS and who did this initial study, engaging them with Panone to come and take pictures of that, engaging with our principals, engaging with us, engaging with some teachers. What are those pinch points? What do we need? And how and what could they design and how much would that cost? That's what I would like in terms of, I could do those things. I have an idea, that'd be great. But again, I think resulting in their engineering expertise to show and to showcase what that might be, having them come and present some of that, giving, getting feedback from you to them, I think would be beneficial in that process. Because even despite looking at if in fact some of these numbers stay relatively true, there is still roughly about a million, a million and a half that could be used for future and, and other projects. When borrowing these funds, they do need to be utilized by May of 2027. Or at least us obligating into a contract by May of 2027. The original study we did with Panone, if you remember back, when we approved the loan, we also approved a debt resolution or reimbursement resolution to ourselves. So we can reimburse these projects back to the capital projects that we're doing as well. If there are grants that are opened up, I'm confident that Panone will partner with us to secure those. Any ESCO projects, they partner, they will probably seek those out. But it could be part of the discounted price that's in there as well and they will seek those out and keep those.
So do you need from the board a go-ahead to say, let's have Panone look at some of these interior spaces? Because I want to do that. I know the interior spaces, at least at the high school. I think it would be prudent at some point, maybe even this evening when we're done here, although people might not want to, just go up with you or Craig to like cafeteria and look on either side of the cafeteria, walk through the chicken wire area that is our athletic storage area and some of those areas. So the board can see what we're talking about, which I think desperately needs refurbished for our, our students. And I, I could see it, I know exactly what it looks like and I would give my go-ahead. So if, if you need a go-ahead from the board, let us know and we, let us know what we need to do. And, and I do think a minor, a little minor 10-minute tour of this particular area would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm open to, and I'm sure Mr. Funk is open to take anybody on the 10-cent tour. 10 cent.
Well, maybe, maybe informally, if some of us want to meet a half hour early next week, we could do something like that. I think that would be very helpful for people to see what we're talking about. Even at one point, we talked about maybe doing something different with the auxiliary gym. I'm not suggesting that, but I'm sure there are board members haven't been to the auxiliary gym. So just that tour of that part of the high school, maybe would it be all right if we got together a half hour early next week and we just did a little walkthrough?
Absolutely.
And then, I don't know what, I don't.
Yeah, I think what we would probably do is begin to meet, I think just because of the amount of things and the way I talk, let's meet around 5:15. And we can meet in the lobby of the high school at 5:15.
Maybe send an email reminder.
Yep. The next steps I'm looking for, if, if, kind of a straw poll. I'm not looking to ask to go to an ESCO. What I'm looking to do is permission and the March Agenda to hire Panone Engineering for a second time to do the scope of work at which I proposed here, to actually to go and to help me develop ESCO advertisements, to look at these and discern if in fact an energy savings company and that type of project is best or is it best to, to not go that route? And then the second would be to look at these spaces from an engineering and architecture point of view.
I, I, I think I heard you say two things. One is the energy piece and my question is, so how much money? And the other had to do with looking at some internal spaces. 12,000, and 7,000, where did I miss that?
So looking at these two, it would be $7,000 to do the design of what would these spaces would be, which is the, looking at if we could redesign the athletic director's office and repurpose that for any, any particular future space. Not that he's moving out, he could always move in with me. Looking at what these spaces could be to adjacent to the cafeteria, looking at the auditorium itself and any of those, those adjacent spaces that fill within the scope of their study. And then the 12,500 would be to see if an energy service company and what that advertisement would be.
Does, does anyone have a problem with having that put on the agenda for Tuesday? Anyone have a problem with us voting on that next week? Okay.
Thank you.
Just, just to clarify, we're doing this so that we can then prioritize whether any of these things that you're discussing take precedence over stuff that's already on here or could be done in addition to?
I think in addition to, this right here, in my opinion, once again, if you don't take care of the roofs, the walls, nothing else really at this particular point matters.
Well, no, absolutely, I don't disagree with you. But there might be some things on here that get lower priority and I think we need to see the whole big picture. Because now if we're talking about you're going to do building, some interior building renovation, what does that look like? And as you've stated, these are only estimates. So you might go into window replacement and now the FS is going to have to be repaired and that's going to increase that cost. So while you may have a cushion of a million dollars, that cushion of a million dollars could get eaten up very quickly. So while it's prudent that we are looking at some other options, that million dollars could go very quickly just in what you have here. So I think that's something that prioritizing.
Yep, yep, I think that's well said. And, and really I'll put the end in mind, you know, the goal would be, we will not get more than likely on anybody's construction docket for this year, because I think it's, it's already filled up pretty quickly. I think the goal would be to see what could be done, to continue to study this, but to look at going out possibly in May for, and placing this for requests for qualifications, which would mean that they would come on site, those who are interested, doing the tours, seeing what, what it would look like, putting together their proposals, us reviewing their proposals with the rubric, scoring it appropriately, looking at their past. their proposals with the rubric, scoring it appropriately, looking at their past experiences. At least with an ESCO project, there is zero, allegedly zero change orders, which makes a big difference when it comes to certain projects. That's why you'll see there's a little difference in some of the pricing as well.
Before we adjourn, I want to say one other thing. Don't get mad at me, everybody. But I'm trying to help steer us in certain directions. So definitely not doing a new building. And we're definitely, we're not doing any new roofs. We're repairing them.
That's correct.
So here's my other question. Are we, are we finished talking about a solar array? Or is that still up for discussion? Because I, we need to focus. I think we are focusing. I think this study has helped us to focus. So is that another thing we can check off that, that we've done our due diligence on? Or where are we with that?
Well, that certainly is your discussion as to where you're at with the solar array. My whole thoughts with the solar array at this point, in the absence, or I shouldn't necessarily say the absence, but in the, in the inabilities to understand where the Inflation Reduction Act currently sits, and if that's still active to take proposals, I would hate to build or ask to build an $8 million solar, or $6 million solar array, and only for the Inflation Reduction Act proposal, never to get any funding. And then what would have been 35% back to the district and some others, wouldn't have been there. So I, unfortunately, I think at this point, the window might have been, where it became a little more lucrative, may have been closed. And that's all I have, unless anybody has anything at this time. Any administrators or anybody, any public comments electronically? So no electronic public comments. Please have a great evening. Thank you very much for your time.